Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening to our city council meeting. This Tuesday, February 22nd, which happens to be my wedding anniversary. So Lori, if you're watching, love you.
Happy anniversary.
Well, we will start with a roll call, please.
Mayor McHeckern.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Councillor Tabor.
Here.
Councillor Denton.
Here.
Councillor Moreau.
Here.
Councillor Bagley.
Here.
Councillor Lombardi.
Here.
Councillor Blaylock.
Here.
Councillor Cook.
Here.
I'd ask that you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, no minutes to accept, so we are on to our most exciting part of the evening, a recognition of the Portsmouth High School Girls Alpine Ski Team Division One State Champions. So, pause. Hand over some plaques.
Thank you, Mayor McHeckern, and welcome, everybody, Portsmouth City Councilors. Hello, good evening. First off, happy anniversary. So, I'm glad you're here with us today. As you can see, I'm wearing my Clipper Pride jacket today, which means it's a great night for Portsmouth High School students. 2022, Alp- Girls Alpine Ski Champions. They actually etched out Bedford this year, who they lost to last year. So, these guys really, lot of effort, lot of work and hard, on, you know, on the mountain and off the mountain, dry land training. They have a great coaching staff, and we're really proud of them. And we actually got, I know, I saw Chief Newport in here somewhere, thank you, sir. He actually provided the escort again for us to go through downtown, so you might have heard us on Valentine's Day with sirens and horns and everything like that, and it was a lot, actually, I was on the bus that year, that time. So it was a lot of fun for the girls, and I know we were all having a good time. So, without further ado, I know, I'm going to have Coach Kyle Harrison come on up, and he'll help you hand out the plaques, and we'll get the girls up here. First up is Hannah McHugh. Our team captain, Brady Beeland. Is Ryan here? Assistant Coach Ryan O'Sella? I don't know, I didn't see him. All right, Assistant Coach Kim Dadeos. Kim's going to make a speech right now. And Head Coach Kyle Harrison.
Thank you all. It's awesome. In chatting with Kyle, Head Coach here right before, said something that stuck with me. You guys won, and that was the second thing that he mentioned. He was just so proud of the type of athletes that you guys all are embodying. And I think that makes, you know, it's awesome to win, but I think winner blues, the character that you all demonstrate makes Portsmouth proud. So, thank you so much for being who you guys are. Really appreciate it.
And if I could just finish off, I just wanted to say, thank you so much, Mayor McHeckern, Councillor Blaylock, they joined me a couple of weeks ago, jumping into the ocean for New Hampshire Special Olympics, and the Penguin Punch, you guys rock. Hopefully, we can get everybody doing it next year, right? Okay, thanks a lot, have a great night.
As long as it's 55 degrees again. You're more than welcome to stay, you don't have to. Appreciate it, guys.
We have homework. We have homework.
All right, next up, we have public comment. I'd ask that, I'll go through the names here on, on the signups, and we don't have as many, so we'll all have three minutes. And then, if you do want to speak on Zoom, I just asked that you raise your hand now over the next minute, we'll cap that, and then we'll go through Zoom. Ask to have residents speak first, but first up is Mr. Jeff Goss.
Can I take this down?
Sure, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name again is Jeff Goss, I'm here to speak on outdoor.
And just your, your address for the record, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm at 123 Market Street in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm speaking on behalf of outdoor dining, about outdoor dining, on behalf of the Clipper Tavern. Looking what is going to be proposed to the city council tells me a lot of things. Number one, some restaurants will be left out. My question is why? We are a city that has talked so much over the past few years about making Portsmouth a walking city, and yet now we don't want to divert traffic. The Clipper Tavern was the first restaurant to have barriers put down, and we made the commitment to do much more than put out tables and chairs. We spent thousands of dollars to make the area look great, and something the city would be proud of. We forced other restaurants to up their game and do the same thing. We paid thousands to add a service station in the front of the restaurant to help with the service for these customers outside. We pay for a storage unit to store all of these items during our off-season. I know that some of the CDC regulations have subsided, and some of the COVID mandates have gone away, but the battle is not over. We have staff that relies on this summer income. We have seasonal staff that we will not be able to rehire without the dining. Labor is way up. A $15 employee is now $22 an hour. Food costs, in some instances, as dairy, chicken, beef, lobster, have doubled in price. How much can you pass on to the customer? I think we have reached a limit on how much we can. A burger should be $22 at these rates, but we are a tavern, and know we need to have a reasonable price. Lease payments in overhead have not been reduced in any way. We tried to negotiate our lease extension, but had to accept the renewal that was already in place, which went up significantly. We have taken loans, not PPP funds, to survive the slow times, and now the light at the end of the tunnel may be taken away. The Clipper Tavern location may be the most benign location in the city that is affected by any of this. Zero parking is lost, and little to no inconvenience to traffic. The current pricing that you are putting out there is too high. It'll take away all the profit that we need to survive. Are we looking to help the business or put businesses out of business? The current setup as proposed will just allow the rich to get richer. I propose a flat fee of $3,500, and payable monthly, just like any other leased space is paid. Rerouting traffic again, why? What were the issues in the past? It's an easy transition at our location with little inconvenience to have a car turn left or right at the corner of Pleasant and Court and get right back onto their route within 50 yards. Isn't closing the left lane on Congress Street a slight inconvenience? But that's what it is. It's inconvenient, but it has to be done in order to help these restaurants survive.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next up is Bill St. Laurent. Topic of cargo at Pease.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. Congratulations for your election. I'm here tonight, and I'm glad to see that it's also.
Bill, I'm sorry, I just need you to state your name and your, and your address.
Oh, Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive in Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here, and I'm glad to see it on the agenda tonight, discussion on the new cargo areas that are going on, are proposed for Pease. I want to, I am the noise, a member of the Noise Compatibility Committee since 1990 at Pease for my neighborhood, the Sherman Civic, Sherman Civic Association neighborhood. I also would like to bring up that you have a representative, supposedly have a representative on this committee that's supposed to be reporting to you, and it was Peter Brasciano at the time, and I don't know, I haven't heard, hadn't heard of him for a long time, so I don't know if he's still on there. And it would be nice if you would select somebody eventually to go on that committee, so you'll have a contact. Right now, you can use me as a, as a contact. This is a major effort that's going on at Pease, or it's going to happen at Pease. I might, I don't have a lot of time here, so I'll just bring up some major things. Airport, like in Manchester, has 200,000 square feet of cargo area and 100,000 square feet for repairs. This is going to be 400,000 square feet and 300,000 for repairs. This is, this is quite a huge, major, and I'm of the understanding that, in an article in the, in the paper, that this, that these planes don't fly at night, they fly in the daytime. Well, that's not true. That's when they fly, is at night, because they're doing their packing and loading their planes and whatever. So this is, this is going to be a major thing for our neighborhood, for Portsmouth, Greenland. They're all getting on the bandwagon. So I'm asking you, as the city council, to be very cognizant of what's going on, and probably maybe if Councilman Tabor and Councilman Lombardi can make a, you know, put a lot, lot of effort into this, because after the, the issue that we went through with, with the helicopters, that's nothing compared to what I see going to be happening here. So, I guess, the idea that I'm here for is to recognize, make you recognize that this is going to be a major effort, and Portsmouth tends, would have a tendency to be really impacted a great deal by this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Eric Anderson, also speaking on the cargo PDA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Eric Anderson, I'm from 38 Georges Terrace in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Presently, I act as your representative on the PDA Board of Directors. I take this responsibility seriously and with the intent to be as transparent in all matters that have concern with the city and its relationship with the PDA. My purpose here this evening is to solicit your engagement into the recently announced and media-reported development project at the trade port, steer the e-commerce activity. I've tried to dialogue with you in a variety of ways, but took this opportunity also to convey my message to you, to hopefully be cognizant and engage in this development. What I feel is most important is that any announced development remains visible in all regards with engagement of the surrounding communities to assure that any impacts are thoroughly recognized and investigated, and to assure compatibility and alignment to the values and the qualities of our community. While this evening's agenda includes a report from Councillor Tabor and Councillor Lombardi on PDA activities, I trust that they will, as I will do, our best to keep you appraised of this project. At this moment, it's in preliminary stages by developers Kane Incorporated and Procon Incorporated, on many different aspects to be considered and required for it to be further reviewed by the PDA. In a presentation made by both companies at the January PDA meeting, the size and scope of this project, when fully built out, in opinion, is very significant. With that significance and purpose, it will be undoubtedly, it will undoubtedly increase air and nautical and ground traffic activity in this community. A most important ingredient to this discussion is that it's presently unknown who the end user, or end user company or companies will be to the 700,000-plus square foot warehousing facilities to be constructed. As a suggestion, I think it would be beneficial to the city council, at the discretion of the mayor, to have a similar presentation made to you, so that you could assess its scope, its assets, and potential impacts with questions of any concern, and adding to the public transparency of the process. As earlier stated, this is an exciting project that deserves understanding and attention by all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. And thank you to your service to your city on the PDA. Next up is Gretchen Rath. Subject, outdoor dining.
Good evening. I want to thank Karen Kennard and her team for develop.
Oh, pardon me.
Oh, Gretchen Rath, 112 Penn Hall Street.
Thank you.
Sorry. I want to thank Karen Kennard and her team for developing the outdoor dining proposal. I support the fees that have been proposed. Downtown merchants, restaurant owners, and retailers were subjected to COVID restrictions starting March 2020. Restaurants and shops were closed for a period. Businesses that were able to turn to curbside pickup did so, whether a restaurant or retailer. When businesses reopened, there were occupancy restrictions recommended by the CDC and the state for restaurants and retailers. Restaurants and retailers were given opportunities to find financial assistance with federal and state grants and loans, such as PPP, Main Street Fund, and SBA assistance, to name a few. These were offered to restaurants and retailers alike. The city of Portsmouth implemented outdoor dining in early 2020, and gave aid to restaurants by giving them the free use of 69 public parking spaces, and in 2021, they gave 76 public parking spaces. The city lost more than 300,000 each year for the past two years by giving up these public parking spaces to restaurants at no cost to them. Retailers were given no such help. In fact, the loss of parking downtown could be perceived as compounding the retailer's struggle to bring customers to their shops. There were many scenarios that could be described as traffic nightmares, issues with trucks finding enough loading zones to drop off goods and double parking, streets narrowed to one lane congesting traffic flow, or customers circling the block for parking where there was none. There were several occasions where the parking spaces that were given over to restaurants were not in use until the evening hours, empty tables taking up valuable parking space, frustrating shoppers even more. As the city manager stated when she presented the proposal, it will not be equitable. What it is, though, is a step in the right direction in getting more equitable. The local taxpayer should not be funding the loss of parking revenue. If one parking meter brings the city an estimated $1,000 a month on average, the season from April to November cited in this proposal would bring an estimated 8,000 per parking space. The fee of 5,700 per parking space is a step in the right direction. There are no restrictions in place right now. The fee should not be lowered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gretchen. Next up, we have Sue Pallidora, also on outdoor dining.
Sue Pallidora, 245 Middle. And I just wanted to reiterate what Gretchen said in many ways. There are many parking spaces. There is, outdoor dining is, in some cases, makes sense, like popovers, they have their own area that they can extend, it's a sidewalk. The other places require to take over other parking spaces, which are already premium during that time of the year. So, I'm thinking the equitable, to make it equitable, we are also going in the right direction, because if we're going to focus on only restaurants, what about direction, because if we're going to focus on only restaurants, what about those other businesses that do not deal in food, that are retailers? Are they going to be given some sort of access to a special parking for their own, for their shops? And so we got to move into the equitable arena quite cautiously, to make sure that we are not extending, extending this far beyond what it needs to be. We had some critical needs in the last two years, those seem to be subsiding, so we need to be, keep the needs of the regular business owners in Portsmouth to their needs, and also traffic patterns. There were several locations down on Congress Street that it was like, the traffic, the way that it, it just had to be redirected, was almost ridiculous, actually. So we need to keep that in mind when we reauthorize this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue. Next up, we have Kevin Dwyer, also on outdoor dining.
My name is Kevin Dwyer. I live at 461 Middle Street in Portsmouth and own Dwyer's Pub on Bridge Street in Portsmouth as well. I spoke a few weeks ago in support of continuing outdoor dining, and would just like to restate my support of the program and how much it's done for my business during the ups and downs it's experienced over the past two years due to the pandemic. Love the opportunity to work with the city, to find ways that could make sense to continue our outdoor patio, and appreciate what you've done thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up, we have Rick Bexton, under Just the Facts.
Good evening, once again. Rick Bexton, 1395 Isingard Street. Just a simple, couple of facts. I would strongly urge that you not move forward with the DSA agreement, parking agreement. I'm not so sure if you have been brought up to speed. I lived that project from beginning to end, from Lot 6, which stands directly across in the Founding Place Garage, where we lost two workforce housing units. There were two duplexes that were torn down with promises being made, promises being made that there would be five workforce housing units in Lot 5, which sits on the corner on Maplewood, and that was sold, and Lot 4 was sold. And I truly believe that Lots 3 and 6 will be sold. The mayor and Council Tabor both know my concerns, as well as the other councillors' concerns. I look at this agreement, it doesn't look anything beneficial for the city of Portsmouth. Still don't even see the simple fact that if you go and you honor this tonight and allow the city manager to move forward with this agreement, that they are rescinding the lawsuit. I guess it would be my hopes that at least that would happen, we'd get something out of it. But what you're going to do is, you're going to lose 68 spaces forever, 68 spaces that not just Mr. Rogers and DSA will be able to go and use, but I believe that they're going to sell it, like they did with the other two lots, they can use it as collateral. They can borrow against those 68 units. It's transferable with those two properties on Lots 3 and 6. And the one real big concern that I have is Lot 2, which is the community space, which was used for Lots 3 and 6 to be able to go up a story higher than what our zoning requires. 4,000 square feet was used for each one of the 8,000. And what most people don't know is, is we paid $800,000 for that lot, and it sits. But we don't have the deed, and we don't have anything to it. Mr. Rogers had an out. He either gave us, which was now Bob, I think, two years ago, he had the ability to go and either give us $800,000 back, so he could keep Lot 2, or hand us the deed. Now, in 2020, shortly after my council was elected, we were told that there was a force major that was actually put in place. I didn't know what a force major was, I'm not the lawyer, Bob is. But with that being said, they basically put a stead on that for an additional two years, which is coming up next, 23, I believe, Bob, it was two years, to be able to go and do either, we get back our $800,000, or we get the deed. Negotiate. You have the ability and power. We did negotiate. It wasn't done, we were in the middle of it. I asked the mayor, and I asked Council Tabor to go and table this, educate the council, tell the truth on what's there, so that this council can make a conscious decision, what's in the best interest of the city. You all work for the residents. I'm a resident, you are residents, but you represent us. But just because there's a simple lawsuit doesn't mean we cave into everything. There's things that are worth fighting for. I lived six years with this project, this is something to fight for. Please don't give it away, do the right thing for Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next up, Peter Huda, on FY23 budget, Tabor motion, Denton motion. Got three minutes.
I didn't even get up here yet.
Oh, no.
Good evening, Councilor, Council and Mayor McGecon. First one is a question.
Name and address.
Peter Huda, 280 South Street. What is the FY23 budget guidance that was given to the, by the city council to the city manager? As a taxpayer, I'd like to know if it was 5%, 10%? We have no transparency to that yet. That was my first thing. Next one is on Council Tabor's motion. I am requesting that the city council table this motion until this council and the public have had a presentation to clarify what the taxpayer dollars are being committed by signing this contract to be a contributor to this corporation. This motion appears to commit taxpayer dollars in the form of using city staff to create a new city-run utility without a public hearing. See the contract, page 4, Article 5, Cost Sharing Principles. This is committing money. In effect, a vote on this contract will commit all of the ratepayers to this contract without their consent. My next is a question. How can you move forward on this motion when the costs to the taxpayers are unknown? All the cost sharing for this contract depend on a number of participants, plus the added cost to the taxpayers of creating staffing and other municipal, in another municipal department. Next question, who will make the selection or choose which providers will be available to Portsmouth taxpayers? A non-elected committee on the taxpayer's behalf? Having been one of the city council members who did attend this work session in June, and I could tell you who was there and who wasn't, Mr. Mayor. My interpretation of this motion is to commit all Portsmouth tax rate, tax ratepayers to the startup costs associating with establishing a utility. And I believe the main clause that the taxpayers, ratepayers, need to know, need to be clear on is this vote will automatically switch you into this new utility. When it's created, you have to opt out. The ability to make a provider choice currently exists for everyone in the state. This action would take away that individual freedom and, and freedom to choose a provider, unless you opt out. Next, I'm going to go to Council Denton's motion. Council Denton, you have connected two entirely different motions with the word "and" here. And I believe each one needs to be on its own to accomplish two different things. As a taxpayer, I object to the first motion on outdoor dining fees. Move to amend having the city's proposed dining fees. This question requires a public hearing before the city council even considers the vote. There are only two sources of revenue to cover operations of this city, property taxes and other revenues. These fees are other revenues. So when you decrease the other revenue sources, the dollars have to be made up someplace, and it's going back to the taxpayer again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Bill Downey, on the subject of McIntyre. We have Bill.
Oh, he's coming.
Oh, he's coming. All right.
There he goes again.
There he goes.
Bill Downey, 67 Bow Street. So tonight, I'd like to speak about the McIntyre. Some of you might be familiar with the Durham situation, where they have a dam. Some people call it the Dam Dam. So there's two sides to this argument. Some people want to remove it, some people want to preserve it. But I don't know if any of you guys caught the letter from a fellow named Jeffrey Hiller today in the Herald. So I thought it was reflective of what we're experiencing right now. And the title is, Something is Dirty in Durham, and It's Not the Mill Pond. Democracy, by definition, is government by and for the people. At the very core of democracy is implicit principle of fairness. Democracy, very existent, depends on the truth. Sadly, I see Durham leaders attempting to place their thumb on the scale. I feel that we're experiencing the same thing here in our city, that he goes on to say, there's two parties, one wants to remove, one doesn't. The prices are very similar, and 1.5 million. But the city has implied that's an additional $4 to $5 million tab. It's highly unlikely, it's actually improbable, that that will ever happen. But he goes on to argue and say, why would this be? He says sadly, they're perpetuating a narrative that is in their own best interests. Now, with all due respect, I've heard the argument there's tens of millions of dollars of exposure. As you know, I've had the pleasure of having my own consult with a group that says otherwise. I would argue, Mr. Sullivan, if that was a valid case, they would not be waiting this long to go on with this lawsuit, that it was leveraged effectively, but unfortunately it was levered during this election. And I felt like there was some misrepresentation in some comments. To say that there's some kind of interlocking, kind of Rubik's Cube legalities, but yet a tiny baby step was going to unplug this just doesn't square up. It was also mentioned that there was no intent that this action to rescind was not going to lead to any specific thing. I don't believe that to be accurate or genuine. I think this is all predicated on the idea, avoiding a potential lawsuit, but however, I don't think we got the honest skinny on this. And how much time do I have?
27 seconds.
Okay. Just in summary, sorry I don't have more time. Mayor, in this format, unfortunately, you get the last word, and you know I enjoy going back and forth with you. And your rebuttal was that you've always followed the council, to listen to council. But I think there's an addition, like any good attorney or medical advisor, to get a second opinion and be skeptical. So I encourage all you people to follow counsel, be open-minded, but have critical thinking skills in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, we have Allison Tanner, on Community Power.
My name is Allison Tanner. I live at 380 Greenleaf Avenue in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and I am a resident for 45 years. And I think that it's time that this city took the opportunity to look at community power, in that we're, we would not be required to pay anything initially, we're just looking at the opportunities. What it does is it increases the possibilities for the people that live in the city, and it enables us to have a say, a voice in government, in state government regarding lobbying for initiatives to support renewable energy installations, and to support rebates for having your home insulated, and all of these things are reflected to help to decrease climate change. There are, as I said, no costs incurred, just to sign up. It's a wait-and-see thing. We would look at the different brokerages that are available to potentially reduce the amount of money that's spent for each resident in the city of Portsmouth on their power, and it also has you the opportunity to increase the amount of renewable energy sources that are used to produce the power that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And last, do we have any speakers on Zoom?
Two on Zoom.
We have two on Zoom. Last in the room, we have Cliff Lazenby, topic November 18th.
Hello, Cliff Lazenby, 303 McKinley Road. Good evening, Mayor, city councillors, city manager, attorney, and clerk. It's nice to see you all. While my primary topic is the November 18th meeting, I do want to quickly voice support for joining the-
Oh, sorry, name and address, Cliff.
I started off.
Okay. Oh, fine then.
So I do want to quickly voice support for joining the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. I previously served on the Energy Advisory Committee and was on the Sustainability Committee who initially brought forth community power to the city of Portsmouth. There's much to gain by moving forward, I hope Portsmouth does. As to November 18th, I agreed with your February 10th decision to rescind the actions of the November meeting. Regardless of whether we can work things out with Redgate Kane, the legal advice from our experienced and qualified counsel is that steps taken November 18th were hurtful, not helpful, to the McIntyre project and the city. However, there was more about that November meeting that is of serious concern, important factors yet to be acknowledged or confronted by the city and the city council. There were lines crossed in how that meeting was conducted by the Portsmouth mayor and the city council, in terms of the right to know law, in reference to city council rules, in terms of being open and honest with the people our city council is sworn to represent. While on the February 10th agenda, you listed the Doug Roberts lawsuit, the topics it legitimately called out remain unaddressed. If we're going to learn from those mistakes to heal and move on, we need to face what happened and make efforts to improve. Perhaps more concerning, but at least as urgent, about November 18th was how it pointed a spotlight on shortcomings of our current rules and laws. There were steps taken that night that tested limits and revealed things that might currently be legal, but probably should not be. Perhaps the most alarming example, five individuals had the power to block the city council from hearing legal counsel on a serious and impactful motion. Once the unannounced motion was made, the city attorney implored the council to recess to hear legal advice. We knew that we couldn't act responsibly without hearing that advice. Yet with their five votes, they forced the Portsmouth city council to act without transparently weighing the ramifications of their actions. In your existing laws, in a public meeting, any councillor can ask for legal advice. Even a criminal being charged of serious offenses has rights to an attorney. How can we let five councillors block even one city councillor from legal advice on a sensitive topic and non-public? Our city hadn't addressed this issue before because we didn't need it. It was inconceivable that the city council would vote to block the city council from hearing legal advice. But plainly, we saw that that can happen. I hope you could commit to doing this necessary work, and wish you peace and resolve as you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. All right, we have-
Two names, Mayor. First is Robert Smith.
Robert, please state your name and your address.
Robert Smith, 240 McKinley Road. Just like to speak about the, I guess it goes under several things, the sidewalks in Elwin Park and the safe routes to school. First, I want to say I am very for safe routes to school. I'm for traffic calming. I'm not convinced we need sidewalks in Elwin Park as of yet. I think there are other things that can be done before going through the cost and expense of digging up people's yards and taking from the roads, things like flashing signs, we can install speed, humps, bumps, whatever you want to call them. When I look at the, one of the diagrams, I'm still not convinced where these sidewalks would go. Nobody's been ever been able to say exactly where they want to put them. It's just they target McKinley Road, Van Buren. They totally ignore Hoover Drive, which probably has no more than four houses with driveways that exit onto Hoover. There's plenty of room for buses and parents to travel down that road, take a left onto Taft Road. There's an access road that goes right to the school off of Garfield Road, plenty of room for kids to ride their bikes, walk in, parents already use that to drop their kids off, pick them up after school. So I just feel that we need to hold off on the sidewalks, do other things, and we need to have more discussion and definitive ideas of where these things are going. So again, I'm for safe routes to school. I see another diagram that seems to imply that if we put these in, we're going to get kids riding their bikes and walking to school from probably as far out as the McKinnons area and down near Tucker's Cove. I'm not convinced of that. I think parents are still going to continue to drive their kids to school. But we have a bigger issue of just speed in the area, not only from parents dropping their kids off, but also from residents. So I'd like to see- So I'd like to see some of those measures down before we start putting sidewalks in. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next, we have Marie Bodie. Could you please state your name and address?
Hello, yes, Marie Bodie with 121 State Street in Portsmouth. I'm also representing as an employee of McNabb Properties. And I would like to thank the mayor, city manager, and council for, I respect the time that you are taking to evaluate the fees associated with outside dining. And I am sure that you've all seen the letter as written by Mark McNabb concerning his perspective on fees and the elaborateness of what had been proposed. As you know, we continue to demonstrate in our development projects in downtown the extra expense on providing wider sidewalks for outside dining within the restaurants that we own. We believe wholeheartedly in the need for traffic calming. And we, again, in developing projects, have done extensive landscape, and I think even in the past year with the outside dining at the Rosa Restaurant, et cetera, it was evident that we spent a little bit more time, energy, and money on making the outside dining more beautiful. As you take this very spectacular opportunity to improve the vibrancy of our downtown already, we encourage you to also be considering for the future how trash can be remedied in this setting and in future developments. And we believe that this can be a revenue-neutral opportunity with regard to the parking and loss of revenue, and perhaps reevaluating the use of Parrot Lot and charging for parking there. With that, I thank you again for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Marie. And we have one last speaker, Hannah Corcoran. Hannah, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name's Hannah. I live at 85 Albany Street in Portsmouth. I'm speaking on behalf of, I work at The Goat, and we, you know, we wanted to say thank you to the city council for creating the option for outside dining. We saw a big influx of people coming in during the COVID times, feeling comfortable to sit outside, and it really helped our business, and not just our business, but a lot of the restaurant businesses survived during that time. Had we not had that, it could have gone a much different direction. So I mostly just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. All right, with that, we will close public comment. Next up is public hearings and vote on ordinances. First, a continued public hearing of the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP. We will, no presentation this evening, but happy to hear, right? We don't have a presentation?
Correct.
Anybody with comment on the Capital Improvement Plan? We've kept the public hearing open. Please step up to the microphone.
Do you have my time?
No, we don't. Get as much as you want, but just mentally think of three minutes.
Yes. A long three minutes? Good evening, Mayor McHeckern, councilors, and city staff. I'm Effie Malley from 428 Pleasant Street in Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to speak in support of project number 21 in the Capital Improvement Plan, the Climate Action Plan. From municipalities who have gone before us, we know elements that make a climate action plan successful. Support from the city. The average city spends less than half of 1% on climate action. Excuse me. Second, a plan with actionable steps and accountable performance measures. And thirdly, technical guidance to define targeted emissions levels. The Climate Action Plan ties to our city's master plan goal number five that addresses sustainability and moving towards net-zero carbon emissions, as well as supporting other goals. I hope you'll support the capital funding in the CIP for the Climate Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Effie.
Judge Cama?
Yep. Folks, Pete, are you lining up back there?
Oh. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager Conner, city attorney Bob Sullivan. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Rich Brabazon. I live at 260 McKinley Road, and I'm here to speak about the issue of Elwin Park sidewalks in the CIP. I am not in favor of moving the Elwin Park calming measure, or traffic calming measure, from 2000 fiscal year '24 and '25 to bring it back to fiscal year '23 with a $1.6 million bond. Here are some of the reasons why I feel this way. It is fiscally irresponsible. The 2010 Safe Roots to Study, School Study, and the 2019 Study both discuss calming measures that should be taken ahead of sidewalks. Even though the city adopted the 2010 plan, none of these measures have been taken, and they are much less expensive than sidewalks. These measures include lighted signs for crosswalks and school zones. Currently, there are only a couple of signs stating pedestrian crossing. There are no school zone signs, or should I say, when I say no school signs, some of them are barely legible or readable. There are no lighted signs, not even one flashing yellow light when school is opening or closing. Also mentioned, the sidewalks in the study also mentioned are raised sidewalks with reflectors and better signage. Many of the roads, including Fillmore and Van Buren, and Adams at Van Buren, don't even have a sidewalk, never mind a brightly painted, reflected, or lit one with any signage. Both studies suggest bike paths. The 2019 Study suggests a bike path with reflectors where there would be no parking during school hours. The current path, where I live on McKinley Road, is just one line down the road on each side of the street. We, I believe, along with many other neighbors, have invested, that I've seen in the neighborhood and talking to neighbors, have invested significant money in our driveways to double them in width. This allows us to park additional cars to get them off the roadway. If the sidewalks are built by taking five feet of city ziggles to build it on our front lawn, we will not be able to park behind each other without infringing on the sidewalk. In the other two cars, well, they'll probably end up in the street. Not to mention that they would be, I would be losing part of my lawn, which I greatly love. It is very easy to be in sport, to be in support of theoretical sidewalks when they are on the other side of the street, but until it's actually in your front yard, you may not really understand the problem. We see people walking all the time in front of our house. Many times, there are large groups. Almost no one uses the multi-use path that is in front of the house, and I'm referring to that white line, which was the bike lane. I don't foresee large groups using the sidewalk either, but it will push them further into the street. Bicycles will also be forced closer to the road since they won't be using the multi-use path that will become a sidewalk. When we walk around in Elwin Park, there's a loop, and sometimes it takes us into the woodlands. We can only use the sidewalks sometimes because they've deteriorated so poorly. They are not kept up. Most times, they are dangerous. You can barely walk on them, or even run if you wanted to run on them. There is no reason for me to believe that this side, that our sidewalks, which would be put in into Elwin Park, would be any different. If the main concern, and I do believe the concern, is slowing down traffic and keeping people safe, which I am in favor of that, once again, there has been no fiscally more responsible options have been tried or recommended in both studies. There are no speed humps or flashing lights, minimal signing, including school zone signs, except for normal speed limit. There are very few crosswalks, and none that are painted bright, lit up, or have reflectors. Occasionally, we get that speed monitor put on the telephone pole by the Traffic and Safety Committee, thanks to our great police department. In front of our house, it flashes when your car is coming by, but it doesn't tell you to slow down if you're going over the limit. It's really not understandable, maybe, to many drivers. So in a letter that I submitted to the council with an attachment, was from the police department. And there was a request, and then the request was for accidents in Elwin Park. Over the last 10 years, and I've lived in Elwin Park since the early 1990s, and having worked for the police department, I can tell you that this, the report that I have is of 10 years. There have been 18 total accidents, 12 of which occurred on Lafayette Road, Route 1, near McKinley. There was only one accident that involved personal injury, and it was not a pedestrian. It was a bicycle driving into a car. So I thank you very much for your time and consideration with my request. Please consider more fiscally responsible alternatives before moving this to the 2023 fiscal year CIP. Thank you, and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening again. I'm here-
Could you just your name and address again for the record?
Okay. Peter Huda, 280 South Street.
Thank you.
Okay, in following the budget meetings for fire police and school, I have, I'm going to come forward with new information that I would request of the council. I am also looking for answers to the questions that I posed to the council last session on the CIP based on statements made from the police budget. From a taxpayer's perspective, a more realistic positioning of the police station with an estimated cost of $40.6 million would be FY '26. Last year, the police department was allocated $1.4 million to complete the new facility study. The study has not even been started. In the budget session of the police, the chief was asked about how long would it take to build the police station if the study had been completed? And the answer was about three years. So what I'm asking as a taxpayer is not to put this burden on the taxpayers next year or until you get a good estimate on what this should actually be. The next thing I'd like to talk to you about is the $400,000 listed for the next six years. It totals $2 million in the police budget for mold remediation. As a taxpayer, I'm requesting more transparency into what is actually being funded with this money each year. The initial request was for mold remediation, but it seems to have been reallocated to other projects, and according to the chief, the mold problem still exists. The funding between the needed city hall HVAC upgrades that's in the FY '26 budget, which is the root cause of this, seems to be blurred. We have money in both the city hall and in the police budget for both of these. I ask you to stop putting a Band-Aid on the mold issue that's occurring in the basement, and please fix the root cause of this, which is the HVAC system. It would save the taxpayers at least a half a million dollars if this was moved forward and not Band-Aided for the next six years. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening. Christina Dubin, 336 Miller Ave in Portsmouth. Short and sweet, I just want to voice my support for a climate action plan and the funding that it will take to do so. In my role at the Sustainability Institute at UNH, I interact with their climate action plan often, Wildcap, and so I just know how useful of a tool it is, even when it's done, to draw from for short and long-term planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Cliff Lazenby, 303 McKinley Road. I'm here to speak about the Elwin Park neighborhood improvements. Not here to encourage you to move ahead with them, because I think we should. I'm here to encourage you to do it because for more than a dozen years, the city has engaged in a pretty thorough, rigorous public process that recommends that doing so is a good idea. And that includes significant and thorough input from the residents of Elwin Park to the tune of nearly 80% of those residents. I did want to give a little quick history, just perspective on it, and also the nature of this particular kind of project and why it's a little challenging. In 2010, when that Safe Roots to School Study was conducted, my wife Stephanie actually took part in that group because we had a daughter in kindergarten. We had a three-year-old who was a couple of years behind. This past weekend, I had the joy of spending time with that kindergarten daughter when she was home from college. And it's been taking, we've gone through, and my younger daughter's next year will be a senior at Portsmouth High School. And through those years, we've identified in the Safe Roots to School Study that it was not only necessary, but it was deficient compared with the other two elementary schools, New Franklin and Little Harbor. We did a bike pad master plan that also put these improvements as a necessary and valid improvement that was important for the whole city. We talk about the city being bikable and walkable, but this area and this school and those children and their families have been left behind. It's been a good process. It's been inclusive. We, the survey of the residents was just over two years ago, late 2019. We've had numerous public meetings in the neighborhood that were open. There were other avenues for people to give input. I know you have a petition in your packet, which I respect people to provide their input, but those 11 individuals represent about 6.5% compared to the numbers of folks who indicated support in the survey. I did, I do think, and one of the reasons I want to speak up today, was I think that the imbalance of the experience for the families and children for Don Darrow compared to the other two schools is really worth emphasis. Because Safe Roots to School, I think, is the big driving factor. It's not the only one. People in our neighborhood want to get to urban forestry, and that's, that's very tricky if you try and walk down Harding Road. But in the time that we've done these studies, not only have the good bike pad facilities that are available to students at Little Harbor, have they existed, but capital improvements have been done to the existing facilities there, and yet we haven't moved, we haven't, as a city, moved the process ahead. So I applaud Counselor Bagley for not only supporting it in the CIP, but moving it ahead. It's taking an awful long time. And then finally, I think the nature of this issue, it is more urgent when you, when you have kids, right? So that's why we did get involved, because our kids, because we were experiencing it. That line that the gentleman talked about on McKinley Road, if there's a car parked in that line, or if there's snow in the road, or if it's high traffic, there's nothing safe about that painted line on the road, so you just don't, you end up not doing it. And so it seems, you're like, wow, how can we do this? How can we not have this? And so it's urgent. But after six, or seven, or eight, or 10 years of doing it, people burn out on that. And so new families, there's new families coming into the neighborhood, just like every other neighborhood. So I hope the rest of our neighbors will consider that it is more urgent when you have kids, and the kids that are gonna go to that school, but also you as a council, when you're thinking about the process, remember the nature of this issue and think about the fact, it's not- matter just as much as everybody else, and it should be, that priority should speak in your capital investment plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Rick Beckstad, 1395 Visiting Street. I just want to, I guess, point out again a fact. I'm going to be sticking with facts. So I did see on the agenda that Councilor Bagley was proposing, as the last speaker had chosen, about moving up from '24 to '23. I also was at the previous meeting when that was discussed and talked about, and I'm kind of confused because, I mean, let's face it, I mean, I've been criticized for the last two years being mayor and the way my council affected things and not listening to staff, recommendations from staff, recommendations from Karen Kennard, from Bob Sullivan, even from DPW when it would come to Peter Rice. So at that meeting, Councilor Bagley, you had gone and asked a question, and you were emphatically told, not only by the city manager, but by Peter Rice, that there were two perspectives out of it, one being financial, and at $1.6 million, I'm sure most people probably don't think that $1.6 million means a whole lot to anybody just by going and paying over a bond over 20 years, so, you know, it's, it's cost-effective. Peter Rice basically said the same thing. It was put in place for '24 for a reason and a purpose. The other one was, is you didn't have collaboration. And I know that you and many others are new, but collaboration is key to me and my heart. And the perfect example is Beverly Hill. Beverly Hill's been trying to get sidewalks for the better part of over 20 years, and finally, last year, we did the approval, and that went on for years, the eight years that I embedded into the community itself to be able to go and fight for that. And last year, we had collaboration from 100%. I don't think we should be moving forward with anything unless you have 100% to a sidewalk. It worked out great. We did a couple of them, rode a bus. It worked out well. The mayor even complimented me on the simple fact that it came down to two, sorry, three residents that had concerns, and by the end of that bus ride, and when we made back into these chambers, those three residents came, were still with concerns, but it was full 100% collaboration. And that's what a council is supposed to do. You go and you collaborate. You're affecting 72 homes, literally, by going and putting these sidewalks in. I have nothing against sidewalks. Actually, I am a graduate of Don Darrow. I never lived over in, in, in that area, but I played. I grew up in that neighborhood. We never had a problem or an issue, and I know that times have changed, and there's more cars, and there's more people that are there. But until we start to go and fix what we've got, do you know what the sidewalks look like over in Maple Haven? You know, you've got the assistant mayor that's there with these little tiki-tani strips and bumps and hurls and everything else? Anybody been in over in the Panaway lately? There's trees and the roots and everything? Before we start more infrastructure, more overhead expenditures, my father and my grandfather both taught me, don't pay for a tool unless it's going to pay for itself. We have infrastructure issues and problems there that we have to go and maintain, ones that we can't even maintain and plow. I, the last time I ever saw, and I'm sorry, nothing against DPW, I love the guys that work for it, but I don't remember ever seeing one of those fancy sidewalk blowers or plows out in Maple Haven. I mean, they're hard to get along with where the, where the mayor's is now because of the infrastructure that's there. Before we create new, let's fix what we've got. That's the right thing to do. I, I, I wholeheartedly respect what you're talking about going and doing and, and being able to collaborate. I have nothing against what the, what the previous speaker had gone and said. I've devoted my life, Portsmouth gave me almost 40 years, I'm not going anywhere, but at least that history is what's important. History is what brought us together to this point now, to brought me to where I am. The history's got to be taught, you got to listen to it, not repeat those same mistakes. It's the reason why we go and we teach it in our schools to our students. So please, before you go and do it, you, you've been told by two staff members, high-end staff members, that we're not there yet, figure out a way to go and do it. Do a sidewalk. You know, make a thing of it. It really is, people really get charged when, when you invite them out, and it's, God, they're wanting to talk to me. The mayor went and stood with me at at least two meetings over on Bartlett Street, and people thought it was going to be contentious. It was great. People like that stuff. Do that. Don't just go and vote on something and move it forward because you feel it's the right intent when you don't have the collaboration from the people that are going to be affected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. And I just ask for two things. One, I still would like to see money, more money in for the cemetery committee. They've got a lot of stuff to do, and I would encourage you to add money to that online. The other thing is, I ask that as a new council, you really look at the bonding. When we started investigating the bonding in the city, at one point, we had $113 million in different funds. I would ask that before you bond, you make sure your timeframe, you make sure that we're not bonding just to get cash in the coffers for AAA rating, but we're actually going to use the funds. So I ask that you take time and understand the bonding of everything you're agreeing to on that CIP. And I know it'll take some work, and it might take some reaching out to others for education, but I would encourage you to look at the bonding and the way the city bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Any other speakers here?
Hi again. My name is Allison Tanner. I live at 380 Greenleaf Avenue in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and I am also here to support the funds for a climate action plan. It provides guidance that I think the city needs moving forward with this changing climate. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. All right, we have two hands on Zoom. Bert, could you please state your name and address?
Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear, Bert.
Well, I'm impressed with this process. I've never been on this way before. I just would like to, I took my hand down, I thought, but both Allison and Effie and Christine, who were talking about the climate action plan, I'd like to support it because I think of the urgency and the timeframe we're working in, that council's taking a forward-looking position, and I hope to see how it progresses to get us to a climate safe plan. Thanks a lot for your efforts.
Thank you, Bert. Next, we have Robert Smith. Robert, could you please state your name and address again for the record?
Robert Smith, 240 McKinley Road. Just like to address the sidewalks again. You know, I wholeheartedly agree with Rich Bravazon and Rick Beckstad and what they presented. I've lived in Portsmouth a long time, went to Don Darrow School in the 60s, at junior high, when it was a junior high, and graduated from Portsmouth High. Always walked to Don Darrow when I was living on Grant Avenue. Took the bus when I lived in Maple Haven. I live in Elwin Park again. I just see the cost and expense of putting these sidewalks in as there, there are other alternatives that, that we should be looking at, and I agree with what Mr. Beckstad said about getting 100% buy-in. I think we need to talk to every resident on McKinley Road specifically, and so they know exactly what's going in in front of their houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Let's see, no other speakers. Would move, we keep the public hearing open, or it'd wait a motion to continue the public hearing into the next meeting?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's that. Now we have third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 3, Article 11, Section 3.1101-3.1105, Face Coverings During the COVID-19 Pandemic. A sample motion, move that third reading of the face covering ordinance be postponed and definitely not to be brought back before the city council without one meeting prior notice.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion on this? Councilor Moreau?
I'm just wondering, I guess, would it be easier, and, and I'm just looking for background, to actually just go ahead and pass it so that it would then, if the rates climbed again, spiked, would it be easier to move forward with, with it versus us having to give notice a meeting and then have another meeting reading?
So that's a, a question for the council or a question specifically for?
I would think possibly either the city manager or the city attorney.
I think, obviously, that's a total policy decision for the council. If the council were to take either action, I think we could proceed with it.
The assistant mayor, then Councilor Bagley, then Councilor Blaylock.
I think it should be a question of the city attorney, city manager. Is it possible to put a provision in this that, that somehow mentions CDC guidelines, health department guidelines, as they, as we know that this endemic pandemic is, is ever-changing? And so my concern is that if we pass this motion and it has the, the 8% number there and those guidelines, as those guidelines change, as vaccination rates change, as, as this pandemic morphs, that those could be antiquated measures.
The answer to your question, I think, is that it is possible. However, I don't think it's possible right here and right now, because I've always cautioned against trying to make complicated amendments to ordinances on the fly. It's just too difficult to get it all right and the unforeseen consequences are happening. So the answer is, it's possible.
I just want, for the record, that was Chief Murner.
It was a jam, though. It was a jam.
I was trying to, it wasn't, if, okay, Kelly corrected me. I was trying to blame it on Chief Murner. It was Chief Newport.
Sorry.
Kelly pulled your card on that, chief. I was trying to-
If I can jump in at this point to say that, just as the public, just as a health officer felt strongly enough to issue, to suggest that a public health directive be issued, we could do that again, and then if this postponement were to pass, I think it would trigger a revisit to the council in this form so that at the next meeting, with one prior notice, you could take that up.
Okay.
So I had Councilor Bagley, Councilor Blaylock, then Councilor Lombardi.
Yeah, I guess I, my points kind of echo the assistant mayor's. I, I think this is such a, as we've learned, evolving situation that trying to guess what it's going to do next is probably not possible. So I think we, we move to table this or to postpone this, and we rely on the guidance of our health officer if the situation got such that we would need another ordinance, which I'm sure we all hope we wouldn't. Thank you.
Councilor Blaylock.
Thank you. I agree with what Assistant Mayor Kelly said and what Councilor Bagley said. I also want to make sure that we're not sending mixed messages. I know there's been a lot of information, there's been a lot of changing of information. That's the last thing I would want this council to do to the public. So I think while the transmission rates are low, if we passed a mask mandate, it might send a mixed message. We can't write the headlines tomorrow. The last thing I would like to see is council passes a mask mandate. Thank you.
Councilor Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I believe it's part of our rules that we can't make amendments to on a third reading of a motion.
Your Honor, say. Amendment cannot be made a third reading unless there's a prior suspension of the rules.
Okay.
Which calls for two-thirds vote.
Okay.
Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the intention of the council working towards a mask mandate was always to support the public health officer and the health directive that was already issued. There is nothing in tabling this that would stop our health officer from issuing, issuing another directive when it was necessary, and then the council could move to act to support that directive again. I personally don't believe that it's necessary that the council take any action to support directives issued by our health officer, because I think those directives are things that we follow anyway as a community. That's part of the reason we have a public health officer, so that we can respond quickly whenever we have a crisis, and our public health officer has done a great job in leading us in responding quickly. That's why we had a health directive and we needed the health directive, and I get, I think we can count on her to do that again if it's necessary, and then the council can move to act and support her.
With no other comments, I will simply state that I, this is, by not passing this, certainly not a declaration of victory over COVID-19. We're all still very much dealing with this, but it is a recognition that we are moving to another phase of this, learning to live with this. I agree with the comments tonight that we will likely not need to pass this, and instead, if some reason in the future that we do not foresee right now, need to have it back, we'll be in a better position to take the latest guidance on that and amend that, that ordinance as necessary in the future. Since we can't see that future now, I would agree in tabling this, and so we will do so with a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Tabor?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Councilor Bagley?
Yes.
Council Lombardi?
Yes.
Council Blaylock?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right. Next up is the city managers' items which require action, and for those of you that might be surprised tuning in at home, we made a change in the agenda to bring the city manager actions up forward. A couple of reasons behind that. One, staff is here for that, and they can likely get out of here once we do that. And then there's some stuff that always kind of gets lost to, to the end. Rest assured, if there's an issue of, of grave importance that's under the councilor's name, we will suspend the rules and bring that forward, but want to try it this way. So, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up is a request for a public hearing regarding, regarding the elderly and disabled exemptions. It's that time of year that annually the city reviews income and asset levels for both the elderly and disabled exemptions, and then makes recommendations as to these levels pursuant to two RSAs listed. So our assessor, Roseanne Morris Lentz, is here to answer any questions you may have. She provided a memo that's in your packet. It outlines three options for consideration. She will be making a full-blown presentation at the March 7th meeting where we'll have the public hearing and look for action on that measure, but tonight's request is simply to set that public hearing and to formally have that conversation on March 7th.
Any questions for Roseanne? Councilor Tabor?
We, back in 2020, took a look at the amount of the exemption and had that kept, kept pace with the rise in property values, and we did an analysis going all the way back to 2006. The original intent was that the exemption be about half of the value of the home. So I was wondering, are we still, and then we adjusted the amount of the exemption significantly to bring it up to the, the higher home values. So my request would, would be, could we check in on that again when we talk about this?
My suggestion would be, since I'm doing revaluation this year, is to wait to do that once I have some numbers from the revaluation, so you could see where the median single-family assessment is going to fall.
I didn't know how the timing would work.
Right. You can make the adjustment to the exemption amount. Right. You can make the adjustment to the exemption amount any time before the MS-1 is complete. It's the qualification amounts that I need now before the April 15 date to allow people to qualify for the exemption, but the exemption amount can be changed at any time prior to me filing the valuation to the state of New Hampshire for our tax rate setting.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
I have a question around care providers of the disabled. So when you have an individual who may hold more than $175,000 in assets but is not capable of working because they are a full-time care provider for somebody who is disabled and that person lives with them, but does not own the asset, the house, how do we address that?
We don't. The statute only allows for the person owning the property to be able to qualify for the exemption. That's statutorily driven.
So I just have one quick question, Roseanne. On the, I think it's quick, maybe not. The, you've asked that we need to commit to what would be the income or the eligibility requirements, both on income for single, married, and then asset levels. When I've told people about this in the past that we've increased it, they've looked into it, and they've said, well, that's great. That's nice, but it's not going to affect us because I have, you know, maybe $175,000 or more in a 401K or something to that effect where it doesn't quite qualify for them, but they, you know, have a significant tax responsibility. Is it something that you can bring forward in terms of impact to budget if we were to look at increasing those income levels and then further increasing the asset limit around that in terms of what our expected kind of net out from a tax perspective would be?
Well, Judy and I can look at what the impact would be if you increased, well, that would be difficult because I wouldn't know how many more would qualify for that, so I wouldn't know what that impact would be. The only impact I really can calculate is how much the exemption amount off the value of the property would impact the tax rate, not the amount of people that would be able to qualify.
Okay.
So that 175 is an amount of an asset, and unfortunately, the New Hampshire state statute makes me look at every single bit of income that somebody has outside of Social Security, including Social Security.
So, I mean, it's tricky because 175,000, you know, you have to live on that amount too if you're not earning, you know, enough money, and so I think that's the tricky part. Maybe, I think, certainly around revaluations, getting that, understanding that the total amount that could be taken off, but I'd be, I guess a final question would be, are there any limits to what the city of Portsmouth can do from a qualification standpoint?
There's only minimums, no limits.
No limits. Okay. Thank you, Roseanne. Very much appreciated.
Have a nice evening. Mr. Mayor, we would look for someone to move to schedule a public hearing at the next council meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much. Item number two is the outdoor dining and street cafe recommendation conversation. So as you will recall, we have put some recommendations to you, the council, and we were careful to include as many opinions and as many voices as we could. We held this memo until after the Chamber Collaborative of Greater Portsmouth held conversation via Zoom. There were over 40 people on that call, and what I have put before you is really the product of a team effort involving the fire department, the police department, DPW, planning, legal inspections, parking, economic development, and health, and I'm afraid I left out, gosh, the clerk or the welfare director, but all this to say, this was a comprehensive effort. We were cognizant of the fact, the request came to report back on outdoor dining, but you really can't do that unless you take into account all the users of the public realm, including retailers, other businesses, restaurants, residents, visitors, you name it. So I'll cut to the recommendations and the proposed changes from last year, and we have broken this into different ways to consider this. There's one provision for the use of city sidewalks and parking spaces, and what we are willing, what we would like to do is to roll this out with your blessing if there is support for outdoor dining as quickly as tomorrow. And you will see in the bullets here that there are many provisions that stayed the same from 2020 and 2021. We're only slightly updating the information that will be available through our online permitting system. The big changes this year, as have been discussed, is the proposal of fees and for use of city sidewalks, we are considering, putting forth for your consideration, $10 per square foot for the cafe areas, similar to what we did pre-COVID with a minimum of $2,000. And in consideration of parking spaces, we really wanted to provide some point of reference, and in the case of parking spaces, those are currently monetized. And the value on an annualized basis, based on usage through a calculation that Parking Director Ben Fletcher is here to walk through if anyone cares to, is a number of $5,700. Now, we would implement whatever it is this council would like to do. We thought it was appropriate to put a number out there that represents the, what happens when you use a parking space for something other than parking, quite frankly. The other change to this realm would be that we would be recommending a butter approval, that if the applicant proposes using spaces beyond their storefront and into the parking or the sidewalk area in front of their storefront, they must first provide a butter consent for the use of that space. The other realm is for use of city streets or the travelway. As you can imagine, travelways were not built for any other use than vehicular travel. So with specific note of police and fire, there is much more concern about use of the travel lanes for outdoor dining, and as such, there are proposed changes that speak specifically to traffic circulation and impacts to the way traffic moves through the downtown, or specifically the resulting change to a directional pattern of a street, which is not something that we would feel comfortable with this year. The same consideration of fees and a butter approval are in this section as well. And specific to the use of the travel lane, the staff is proposing that 2022 be a transitional year and that 2023 really be a year where travelways are not considered unless travelways are really part of a larger revisioning of the way vehicles are allowed to circulate through the downtown, because as you can imagine, that's a much bigger, broader ask, and we would want to be more thoughtful about that. So we put all this to you for your consideration. We are here to answer any questions you may have, and then the last thing I would mention, as I hinted about, is that we would propose to stand this program up as early as tomorrow with similar timeframes from last year where the idea would be folks who are able to consider use of the public realm in the March timeframe, which is sidewalks and public realm, certain areas could be early March, and then, as we did last year, the barriers would be placed out in the streets the week of April 7th so as to get by the snow periods. And as we did last year, we are proposing an end date of November 27th, but certainly all of this is for your consideration.
It's Counsel Denton, then Counsel Bagley, and Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to help me better understand the cost here, could you give some examples from last year? If some of the restaurants used the same space, what they would be paying under these amounts?
I can certainly do that. We could, if you offered up a couple of examples, we can certainly do that. For instance, Pop Over's was $7,500 back in 2019. They're one of the five restaurants that was permitted pre-COVID in the public realm. Rira was a little smaller than that, and it was purely based on square footage.
If I may, my question's here. Clipper Tavern, the owner was here. I was curious what that cost might be for comparative reasons, and then I'll take some place with parking spaces. How about the Press Room slash German Bakery, whose name I would butcher?
Café Von Sohn.
Area.
I would look for Peter Bend to tell me how many spaces the Press Room and Café Von Sohn took up, but I'll use Mark McNabb's example of the Rosa because I know that took up three parking spaces, and using our suggested fee of realizing the monetized value of a space, it would be 5,700 times three, or 17,000.
100.
100. 100. Thank you. To be fair, I don't know the length of linear feet that the Clipper Tavern space took up. I'm trying to eyeball it, but that's a good example of when the only way to realize outdoor dining for that particular restaurant was to change the direction of a one-way street. That resulted in numerous people going the wrong way, and that really presented a public safety concern. And I do know that Chief Newport's still here, and I know Fire Chief Jermaine is available as well.
Thank you.
I forgot my order, so Assistant Mayor, and then?
Oh, they can go first. That's okay.
Counselor Bagley?
I guess we're going to get a couple bites at the apple, so I'll start with a couple I've got a series of questions, maybe it'd be best to get out of the way regarding parking. Do we know the occupancy of the two garages and what the occupancy at the height of the summer was this past year?
We do, Mayor, through you. Hanover generally peaks at lunch and dinnertimes, and for FY22 so far, and this may not answer your question in peak of season 21 yet, Hanover is averaging 72% during the lunch hour and 59% during the dinner crowd. And it's important to note that in anticipation of the Hanover renovation project, we have sought to actively reduce the monthly cardholders at Hanover by 300 through pricing and attrition so that when we close at the garage a third at a time, we will be honoring the passholders that are there. It may be best for Ben to come on here.
Yeah.
That would really, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor. But he can speak to it way better than I can. I've got all the Ben information here, and he doesn't.
Is Ben on Zoom?
He is.
Over to you, Ben.
Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
I can't see you, though. We expect you to wear a collared shirt, that PTS or that parking shirt there, as you would often do, but we'll just have to imagine it.
I suppose I could put the video on. So city manager was doing a fine, I don't have the ability to put video on, but that's fine. So the city manager's doing a fine job of explaining this. Actually, with that 300 users, if you consider what's called a 43%, what's called a diversity rate, that's how many folks are not using the garage that are a cardholder at any specific time. It's a very high diversity rate, so we enjoy the ability to sell the garage to three different users, one being morning users, one evening users, and then, of course, transient parking. With a 43% diversity rate, that means 57% of those 300 parkers we took out of that garage by attrition and by pricing over to Hanover, or, excuse me, to Foundry, that means 171 users are permanently removed from the equation, a figure that equates to about 18, 18 and a half to 19% of the garage's capacity. This is why in 2019, pre-pandemic, Hanover averaged about 18% higher for both of these time slots, which puts the garage essentially at full, particularly at the lunchtime hour. So that gives you some context as to why 72% at this point and 59% may not sound so high, but we can consider a great possibility that we're going to be returning to the same types of figures we saw in 2019 rather shortly. It's our belief that the garage is going to routinely reach capacity when it is reduced to 600 spaces during renovation. Foundry has a distinctly different clientele, averaging over eight hours per stay. It's mainly workforce parking, so this facility peaks at 41% almost daily and runs that way throughout the day, so this garage also will reach capacity when Hanover is reduced. Those 300 parkers are going to head straight to Foundry, largely in our direction, but, you know, they're also going to find their way there as well by virtue of not having on-street space. So hopefully that answers your questions as to the capacities of the facilities as they stand today and where they should be expected to go shortly.
Yes, thank you, and, Your Honor, I've got a few more questions for the parking director, if I may. The employee parking permits at the Foundry Garage, approximately how many of those are we issuing each month?
The average, six-month average thus far this year is 1,694 signal-use permits issued each month at $3 apiece, average of $5,082 in sales. So, yeah, it's important to understand that this is a very transient group. You're not going to see the same number of users of this type of pass on a Tuesday afternoon that you will see on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening because the program is aimed at users that are specific to, you know, the service industry within the hotel and bar and restaurant industry. So the times that those groups are having their highest levels of traffic are when you can expect to see this group use the parking at the Foundry facility. It's still unique that the Foundry has an eight-hour-plus length of stay. We've had great success with this program and with other initiatives to try and move a lot of our workforce parking in that direction so that we can better absorb the ramifications of the necessary ongoing project, upcoming project, I should say, for the Hanover renovation.
Great, thank you. And how many spaces did we add at the McIntyre site to our downtown inventory?
There's a total of 86 spaces at the McIntyre, 37 on the lower hour area accessed at the intersection of Bow and Penn Hollow Series, and 49 in the upper area accessed directly across from the River House. It's actually two separate lots there. It's probably important to note that the city does not recognize revenue generated in this lot because it has to do with our relationship with the federal government and the building itself. So while it does require, it does give us some retrieve from space issues, it does not represent revenue gained on the city's behalf in the term of pure parking revenues.
Great, thank you. And the annual revenue, I believe we have $150 permit cost for loading zones that is due annually. The annual revenue generated from those loading zone permits, do we have a number on that?
So, yeah, the loading zone permits right now, actually, that number was, where did I put this one? Hang on, guys.
Ben was kind enough to give it to me earlier today. The number is currently seven.
Yeah, we have seven. I'm sorry, manager, go ahead.
No, I'm just using your words. So.
So, yeah. So currently, there's seven permits issued at $250. That's $1,750 in total collections for the current year. So this is a program, just to give some context, that saw problematic abuse in the past. We intentionally increased the price on annual loading zone permits effective 1/1/22, the $250 from the 7/1/21 budget approval for FY22 in order to discourage the very common practice of buying these passes just for the luxury of having multiple 30-minute free parking spaces around town. So the idea was to offer this program to businesses that were in need of such services and to clear the space for professional loading and unloading and eliminate citizen use of said spaces in lieu of having them use regular parking solutions.
And my final question for right now is, even though I realize this is not something we would do, if we were to turn those loading zone areas into revenue-generating parking spaces, do we have a rough number on what that might generate?
So, you know, I did put something together for that. It's difficult, really, because the behavior patterns are largely unpredictable, particularly since it's a new source of parking. We talked about, I think, 39 spaces total when we were looking at the discussion on repurposing some of these spaces, not all of the loading zone spaces, in our meetings at PTS 111621, the minutes of which will come forward here, I believe, in our next city council meeting. So 39 spaces with a percentage of those being in, a vast percentage of those being in A-zone and a smaller percentage being in B-zone. If memory serves, the pure gain, if demand were to hold true across the board, the pure gain in spaces at 100% demand would be about $120,000, $125,000. But you'd have to recognize that some of that parking would probably, in light of less than 100 or 100-plus demand, which I think is going to be alleviated shortly, but in our current situation, some of that parking would come from the garages, so you'd have to recognize that there would be some lost revenue in those situations, and so that number's probably fluid, but I think it's fair enough to use those figures.
Great, thank you. That's the question. Great, thank you. That's the questions I have for the parking director, and I just wanna say I appreciate you getting all that rather complex information together for us for tonight.
My pleasure, Counsel.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just am curious, how many restaurants or cafes are directly impacted by this, the provision not allowing reversal of a travelway?
That's a good question. I think it's a function of who might reapply this year. I will offer up, Clipper Tavern is one. I would offer up that the Franklin is one on Fleet Street. There aren't that many where this was a concern in terms of circulation. I think it's fair to say that the three that take up space on Congress were not certainly reversing, you know, one way in the wrong direction, but taking up a traveling is a consideration.
Assistant Mayor?
Thank you. This would be more of a question for Peter Rice and Chief Newport. So, there's been some concern about, some of these restaurants really are only utilized at night, and I know that, you know, it's been discussed, you know, the barriers, the Jersey barriers that are wanted for safety and concern. Have we looked into alternatives that could potentially, much like I referenced Massimo, at night, you know, his station went out during the day it came in. Are we looking at potential alternatives, so there's some places that, you know, we wouldn't lose those spots during the day if they weren't, if the restaurant didn't want to utilize those spaces?
I think while Peter's coming down, if I can take a stab at that, Mayor, to the Assistant Mayor, there are, every situation is different, and the use of the barriers is key when it's needed to protect travel. And some areas are able to be protected when you just place the Jersey barrier at a leading edge, and Penn Hollow is a good example of that. But Peter and Mark are here now, so I will stop.
Yeah, so I'm not a hundred percent clear what your question was. It was whether we were looking at spaces, whether we identified spaces, or were there instances where it could be allowed?
I guess, I guess it's a joint question, both of those. Could we consider alternatives so that we wouldn't lose spaces that aren't being utilized during the day by restaurants? And yes, then the second part is, are there spaces that you could consider?
So, you were asking basically if there's portable barriers that could be moved in and out?
Yes, that's a much simpler way, thank you.
All right. The short answer would be no, that could be conveniently moved in and out, at least not by DPW staff. That would suffice for stopping a vehicle that I think would be safe, especially at night, without having the proper equipment, which wouldn't be accessible on a daily basis.
And I want to consider this to be a DPW job. I would consider this to be, and I use Massimo as an example, it would be the restaurant's job to figure out some type of, if, you know, there was an approved barrier that could be moved or such.
And in Massimo's case, it's a pretty unique site in that it's a very low-speed street, and there was a lot of congestion in front of it, really helping to calm traffic down. It's also a one-way street. So, I mean, in concept, yes, there are probably opportunities similar, but there's nothing at this point that, you know, that we would contemplate, and somebody would have to come forward with the recommendation. And as the chief said, it's really about safety. You know, if it's at all potential, you know, for cars coming into it accidentally, we'd want to make sure, at least a minimum, the leading edge would have a solid barrier. But it would have to be seen as, you know, would have to, it'd be a case-by-case situation.
Another question is, I know that we don't have a traffic engineer right now, but is it possible that we can, or have we in recent years, done a traffic study to potentially change the flow of some of the streets? I know there's the conversation back and forth of close Market Square, don't close Market Square. I fully understand the Fire Chief's, DPW, and the Police Chief's standpoint on it, and I actually support that. My question is, you know, as we, and I kind of look back at the event we had at the chamber where we talked about, you know, downtown wasn't made for, you know, potentially outdoor dining, and then the argument that downtown wasn't designed for vehicles either, and especially, I would say, the amount of vehicles that we've seen over the last decade to two decades of growth of tourism in Portsmouth. So, my question is, is there a way or a study that we could potentially look into at what the impact of removing some of the vehicles downtown to allow not just outdoor dining, but outdoor shed space for realtors, for retail and other things?
Absolutely. There's traffic simulation models that you can go through, and you can modify the configuration of the roadway and show through modeling, you know, how that impacts traffic and whether it works or not. We, you know, we are hopefully gonna be having a parking engineer starting Monday.
He's very familiar to you. Eric Eby will be coming back.
Eric Eby is.
That's music for it all night. Very exciting. And then, I did have one more question, and I don't know it right now, so maybe I'll loop back.
I just had one quick follow-up to one of the Assistant Mayor questions while you're up here. Retractable, kind of reinforced ballards that I remember on university campuses, could we look into those in terms of, or you see them outside of embassies that can lower, obviously, and then raise the ease of doing that, whether it's electronic, tends to up the price, but I've seen ones that are just kind of in the ground, and then they come up and they walk. Is that something that we could seriously investigate, certainly not potentially for this year, but in years' future, if we would want to close down sections or, you know, potentially allow dining in areas around traffic stops or parking spaces that would have a more, I guess, temporary portfolio than moving in a Jersey barrier?
Yeah, I could, yes, there's definitely items like that that are available. It's just a matter of, you know, investing the cost and what ultimately the city or the council decides they would want to do. But where there's a will, there's a way. He can do it. It's just a matter of how much is it gonna cost and how long will it take to do it?
And I would add to that, that you'd really need to have it in the context of a larger plan.
Yep.
Because the investment in that type of infrastructure, really, it's not a temporary thing. It's, you know, it's something that, you know, you're gonna change the configuration of the roadway, you're gonna change the operation of the roadway for larger periods of time so make it worthwhile, and it'd become a permanent type of activity. So, it's definitely something that can be looked at in the context of a larger adjustment.
Okay. You know, and I'd like that, you know, whether it's through PTS or just to report back to understand all, I guess, I don't even know what the term would be, you know, traffic mitigation measures, you know, for pedestrian use of public thoroughfares, but all, you know, possible, I guess, mitigation efforts that the city could take under, and then, you know, as a part of a broader plan, where that could go. Because I know that we're not going to, as much as, you know, we've moved past cars, we still get deliveries, we still have a need for all of those things. So, permanently shutting those things down, likely harder to do, but if they could be temporarily shut down, that might be, or reversibly shut down.
Just to add to that, Chief Jermaine's not here in person, but I think it would be more of an issue for the Fire Department in getting their vehicles through, more so than the Police Department.
He is on Zoom, I'm reading him.
All right. And just because he's not here in person doesn't mean that we don't care what he has to say. Well, I won't sidetrack the conversation. Assistant Mayor, did you remember the last?
I did. So, as you discussed, looking at the broader and bigger picture, and I'd be remiss to say that we received a lot of support from residents, not just business owners. I would say the majority of emails we got were from residents that were in support of, I know we always call it outdoor dining, but I like to refer to it as on-street dining, because that's really the issue here, is the, is taking up the streetways. And so, I have a quick question, and I think we've touched on it before, but I just want to reconfirm it in the public realm. Fleet Street, with the renovations of Fleet Street, and the consensus, if I'm correct, was that the majority of residents that responded to the QR code were in favor of widening the sidewalks, correct?
That's correct. We, I haven't digested all the numbers yet, and we'll be, you know, presenting them at some point in the future, but it is my understanding, just by a rough look at the numbers, that it was a pretty significant support for that.
So, I think it's something that, this is just a comment and a question, that we should really take into account when we look over the master plan in the renovations that are gonna be coming up to Market Square and just that area in general, that maybe alleviating some of this need of on-street dining would be to consider widening the sidewalks and potentially even, I know, I look at Market Square, maybe even in some of those more congested streets, removing one side of parking. So, therefore, we can widen the sidewalks. So, again, my whole spiel is always making it more pedestrian-friendly downtown. As someone who works downtown and sits out, Mr. Rice, you would know, you'd hear me yell at people speeding all the time on Market Street. So, that's a concern with outdoor dining or without outdoor dining. So, trying to figure out some more aggressive calming measures over the next few years.
More calming aggressive measures.
Counselor Bagley, then back to Counselor Cook. Oh, wait, hold on. Counselor Tabor hasn't asked anything yet, so first bite of the apple, and then Counselor Moreau. Okay.
Thanks, Your Honor. I think we're kind of glossing over one of the big aspects of this. You know, we're a policy-setting board, and what I read in the city manager's memo was, street dining is not just beneficial to restaurants, it's something that benefits the whole community. It really makes the downtown vibrant, and it's created a great atmosphere. And so, I think the first thing for us to think about is, don't we want to keep going down the direction, that direction, and make it permanent? Okay, if we're going to go that direction as a city, then how do we make it work in the interim next year and then longer-term solutions? I think Counselor Bagley's questions really have surfaced the fact that if we took parking away for street dining, there's still plenty of capacity in the garages, which is great, and bolsters the case. I do hear from the restaurants that have given us feedback and others I've talked to, that the fifty-seven hundred dollars for a parking space doesn't quite pencil out. You know, if you have four to six tables and three parking spaces, you have to generate more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of revenue, maybe as much as three hundred thousand in five months. So, that's a tough equation. If we could come in a little lower in the sidewalk charge, I think it would foster the kind of street dining atmosphere that we want to build. And also, we've heard that the two thousand dollar minimum for sidewalk space exists for just a few larger restaurants like popovers, but a lot of the smaller cafes have put chairs out, and they weren't paying that. So, that would be prohibitive. So, those are two of the inputs that seem to bubble up from the process we've had. And, but I think overall, and I agree with the Assistant Mayor, this adds a lot to our town. We want to make it work for the long haul, and now we're just working out the best way to do that. Thanks.
Counselor Moreau?
I applaud the information that was put together, and I do believe the city manager mentioned that there might be some justification for the fifty-seven hundred dollars per parking spot, or how that came to that specific figure. Mostly just because maybe, as in Counselor Tabor was talking, we could do a sort of step-up phase over a course of years versus doing maybe all in the first year. Because I really truly feel like, if you can't park downtown, you're gonna find someplace else, and maybe we really need to look at a broader spectrum of high-occupancy streets, be a shorter time period to cause more turnover. That way, people who are just trying to stop to do, you know, a little bit of shopping on Market Street might find a parking spot if someone's not parked there for three or four hours or whatever the limit is. So, I know that was like multiple questions at once, but I'll put it all out there.
To the Mayor, and Ben, if you could unmute and catch anything I don't add, the way that we placed that value on the, on a per-space annual collection figure, it was calculated for each street where spaces were repurposed, and then we adjusted for the fact that seating would be in effect from April to October only, so for the period of time they were taken offline. But also during those months, those on-street spaces see a much higher utilization or transaction rate, which, according to Ben, is somewhere in the forty percent, forty-three percent range. And that's how we came to the annualized valuation of one space for that period of time of fifty-seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which we rounded down for easier math to fifty-seven hundred. But I guess, we're not, we're just the implementers, and we don't want to weigh in on what we think is appropriate. We just know that it's something that's currently monetized and collected, and the, and as you know, the parking funds are utilized in a variety of ways. It gives back to the two point four million to the general fund. So, if we were to impact what parking is able to produce in revenue, it has ripple effects. So, it's not, it's not a decision in a vacuum, is really what I would just want to make sure people understood.
Thank you.
Counselor Bagley, then Counselor Cook?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So, I'm gonna be probably a bit long-winded, but I suppose at some point we probably should start making motions as well. The big concern I have, and, you know, the response we got primarily from residents, but also from restaurants, shops, retail tended to be split, whether they liked it or not. I would say more said that they didn't like it than did, but there was a split there. But the overall sentiment is that it brought a vibrancy to downtown. It was kind of the silver lining, if there was one, of COVID, was this outdoor dining. So, I think what we all heard was that we want this to continue. What we're hearing from restaurants is that at this price point, it probably won't continue, or it'll continue as it did in the past, where maybe we have a popovers, well, not a rerock, so they're not there anymore, but, you know, just a couple customers partaking in it, or a couple restaurants, which I don't think is what the community wants. So, I did some research this week. New York City, Boulder, Colorado, spent some time on the phone with people up in Burlington, Vermont, and they all are dealing with the same thing that we're dealing with. And I asked them, you know, what are you doing for fee structures? How are you recovering your losses? The fifty-seven hundred dollar number actually makes a lot of sense. Based on my phone calls, it seems five to six thousand was the number that came up a lot for what people were valuing parking spaces at. I did get a pretty nice document from Burlington, Vermont, what they're doing. It's kind of convoluted math, but for no-meter sidewalk spaces, they're doing a hundred and thirteen dollars. For the dollar an hour spaces, they're doing something like three hundred dollars per space. And then for what they call smart meters, which are slightly cheaper than the parking here in Portsmouth, somewhere between a thousand and three thousand dollars per space. So, when we come down to make a motion, I think we have to realize that if we want to recoup the fifty-seven hundred, we're gonna have very few people participating in the program. However, we did waive the fees the past two years, so we should be cognizant of that. On the other hand, I'm sitting here wearing a mask, so we're not completely out of COVID. You know, we're still at a challenging time. So, I would propose that we come up with a fee that we think is equitable, and I would propose, I think Counselor Moreau had an excellent suggestion, that maybe we stagger it in. You know, so maybe this year, it's twenty-five percent of what it's ultimately gonna be, or fifty percent of what it's ultimately gonna be, and then next year, it would be a hundred percent. But that would also give us an evaluation period. If we charge a fee and we get twelve restaurants that participate, maybe we're charging too high a fee. If we charge a fee and every restaurant participates, well, we know we can increase it without attrition. So, I guess that's kind of food for thought to put out there, that we should be looking to what other cities and towns are doing, because they're in the same situation we are. We should be cognizant that the vast majority of the city wants the outdoor dining to continue and the vibrancy of it to continue. And then the final thing I'll add before I pass the floor to someone else is that 2022 is gonna be the transition year by all accounts. We're gonna decide something tonight, hopefully, that will be in place for this year, and then we're gonna probably tell some restaurants, until we bump out the sidewalks, you're not gonna get to have this again. This is kind of your swan song for a year. And the place I would push back the most, and I understand the safety concerns, is I think if, if we're gonna do that, we should do that for all the restaurants that had outdoor dining last year. If they want to have it this year, we should give them the opportunity to. And one consideration we might make is for those that caused the most issues with traffic flow, perhaps we could do an abbreviated. could do an abbreviated season of June through Labor Day. And the other thing I would propose is, the season, I think the start point is good. The Halloween parade is, as we all know, quite a big event. Continuing outdoor dining past the Halloween date, in my opinion, maybe doesn't make the most sense. So I'm looking at maybe October 15th, or, you know, the second weekend after Indigenous Peoples' Day or something along those lines as a better cutoff, so that we clear the streets in time for the Halloween parade. And then we could make exceptions on a case-by-case basis, especially for those places that have small bistro tables on the sidewalk that are easily cleared. So that's a whole lot that I wanted to get out there. I'll yield the floor to somebody else, but I just wanted to let everybody know I've done a lot of research on this, and I think we should really look to what other cities are doing to guide us, because we don't need to make these decisions in a vacuum. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor Cook?
I still had another question that I think is for the city manager or for Peter Rice. It's around construction this summer downtown, and what restaurants will be directly impacted, who had outdoor dining last year, will be directly impacted by any construction being done?
I think it's important to point out that, and Peter, feel free to come on down and help me out. I think it's important to point out that in April, at some point, the Hanover Garage renovation, the first year of three years, which will be at the end of the garage at the time, will have a noise and, as much as we can mitigate, a dust factor. And the hours of operation of that will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM through the week. Weekend work is not permitted, so I think that's going to help inform the decision that restaurants immediately adjacent to the Hanover Garage may choose to take. It's my understanding that the Brick Market Building is hoping to get a certificate of occupancy in early June, so the impacts in that immediate area will lessen. Peter, do you know of any other construction issues in the area besides those two?
No, I wasn't prepared for this question, so there's a lot of construction that occurs, and it can be sporadic, in that, you know, utility companies could come in, or contractors could be doing work and things like that. But I can't think of, I mean, big projects coming down the pike, you know, Fleet Street is going to be, not this year, you know, we'll be looking at Bridge Street Parking Lot, that's going to be relatively small duration.
Some exciting projects that won't impact traffic, like what we're going to talk about next.
Yeah, Islington, on the other end, will be continuing. We won't, I don't believe we'll be in construction on Maplewood Ave, but that's not near any dining. Yeah, I can't think of anything really big, but if I do, I'll report back to the city manager, and she can forward that information to you.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a follow-on, too? Can we develop a plan for the restaurants or cafes that are impacted by road construction or differing traffic directions, so that they have an alternative option? I would hate for anyone to be left out this year who had this opportunity in the past because of changes in either our provisions or because of new construction that we're initiating.
That's hard to answer, because as pointed out, I tried to be diplomatic, but at the end of the day, not everyone will be treated equal here. There will be people who are advantaged by their property location, and there are folks that will be disadvantaged by their property location. And Steph and I were having a candid conversation about this, that, and I don't mean this to sound as smug as it sounds, but I'll say it anyway, that if you were a business that came to rely so heavily on the ability to serve outside and in space that did not belong to your property, perhaps that's an opportunity for that business to look at a different location or a different model. Because, you know, there was a way for us to provide for folks when capacities were reduced during the emergency situation, but that has lessened. So all that to say, I don't know how to adequately answer your question, because there aren't equitable solutions. There are some locations for which it is really problematic for the city to provide proximate dining, I guess is the best way I can say that. Peter Beverley, do you want to add anything to that?
It's really a case-by-case situation. There might be opportunities to mitigate the impacts, but oftentimes there are, you know, construction limits what you can and can't do in an area. So I would hate to force, you know, say that we, yes, we could absolutely accommodate folks. You know, we always try to mitigate impacts as part of our construction projects. I mean, our job is to support businesses and the residents in town. It's not to make their lives miserable. So we do the best we can, but construction is disruptive, and it is inconvenient. However, at the end of the day, we're investing in infrastructure for the city that can contribute to the long-term, you know, viability of the city. So.
Thank you. And I guess my final question is that I noticed several requests for 15-minute temporary parking spots, and that's not officially included in this plan because it isn't actually outdoor dining. But is there a plan to include additional 15-minute parking spots, as was included last year?
What we did in 2020, when several restaurants were highly and completely dependent on takeout, is that we created a host of, a dozen or more, temporary 15-minute parking spaces. We reverted back to the regular 15-minute parking spaces that currently exist downtown in 2021. As we have mentioned, perhaps not to this council, but to the prior council, those are hugely problematic to enforce. They essentially go unmonetized. And that being said, we wouldn't recommend any additional 15-minute spots. However, they were widely seen as helpful to the restaurants. It came up in the conversation with the chamber, and I would venture to say they would be supported by retailers. What we did do in 2020, when they were temporary, we tried to locate them in between multiple users so they could all benefit from them. But that being said, it is not a current recommendation, but it's more an observation of what we've seen.
So currently, businesses can request through the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee to locate a 15-minute parking space. So it is something that folks can request, but there's a process to go through.
I would suggest that we specifically look at 15-minute parking spaces, especially for retailers. We're saying that they're negatively impacted by outdoor dining because of people not being able to park and run in to pick up an item that they've either ordered or to drop off an item. That we should take that into special consideration by extending outdoor dining, that we listen to those retailers and their concerns around pickup and drop-off.
Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank city manager, Department of Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department, everyone for working on this. We have an amazing town, Portsmouth, and one of the greatest things is our restaurants. Our downtown is very unique. We're very lucky. This pandemic was not ideal for restaurants, especially indoor dining, so we adapted. And I want to thank everyone for making all that effort. And I know it's not easy. I know I've talked to the Fire Department, you know, they had to make adjustments. The Police Department had to make adjustments. But I want to thank everyone for all the efforts. I run a restaurant, you know, I've worked downtown since I was 12. I know all the different factors go in. You've got to bring out the trash, you've got to bring in all the deliveries, you get the loading zones, you get the parking for the customers, you get parking for employees. There's so many factors to consider. And this situation is very hard to treat each location, each restaurant, each shop the same, because each one is different. Each one is located at a different location. Each one, you know, has a sidewalk, might not have a sidewalk, might have a street, might not have a street. Like, my restaurant doesn't have a street or a sidewalk. But we want to do our best to accommodate everyone, and I think it is important that we accommodate them financially as much as we can. I think most restaurants are either still recovering or have closed from the pandemic. I want to, I hope everyone understands that the perspective from a restaurant owner, you're still not out of it, you're still trying, I mean, you always adjust your business plan, your model, to make it more successful. But we're really trying to recover from what we've just been through. And I understand, you know, imposing a fee on space on the sidewalk or parking spot, you know, but if there's no seat at the restaurant to sit, then there's no reason to go park downtown. You know, so I think we need to favor that, but I think we need to be careful on stuff, imposing them on businesses that have already suffered.
The Assistant Mayor, and then.
Thank you. I would pose, I guess, a request to the city manager and the Park and Traffic and Safety Committee to look at those 15-minute spots and utilization, and maybe even increase that time to 30 minutes, with the benefit really being retailers, that people can pop into the store. I tend to think 15 minutes is not essentially enough time to pop into any business. And so I think that that would just be my request. I also would potentially put it on the floor for discussion, that whatever fee we may come up with, potentially looking at a satellite program to allow retailers to occupy a space the same as we potentially are going to let a restaurant tour. So that was just a statement.
Counselor, or Counselor Embardi, you're up first.
A while back, John Tabor, Counselor Tabor, was talking about Portsmouth not being built for all the cars that we have. And I, you know, I think that's true. I think part of the problem is the number of cars that come into Portsmouth that are requiring parking spaces. It brings back to me the need for some other form of transportation, you know, within the city, transportation that can bring people to the center of town from the outer regions of it. We had a test of that a couple of years ago with the church parking lot. I don't know how successful that was. It seemed like people used it. It was free parking and a free bus. But it seems to me as, this is not a solution maybe for this year, but as time goes on, if we want to mitigate the need for so much parking in downtown, I think we have to look at a more universal public transportation system for Portsmouth. Just a comment.
Counselor Bagley?
I think I'm ready to make a motion. I move, and I'm going to make a motion with stipulations, and I'm probably going to get some of this wrong, so I'll look to guidance. But I move we adopt the city's recommendations with the following stipulations: that fees be set at $1,500 per parking space, implemented at a 50% rate for this year; that all businesses that operated with outdoor dining in 2020 and 2021 be given the opportunity, namely that businesses that had the worst effect on traffic be operating from the month of June 1st through Labor Day weekend; that outdoor dining shall operate in the spring as suggested, but shall end October 15th or some date in that range before the Halloween parade takes place. So I don't know exactly where the weekend falls, maybe it's the 17th or the 20th, but with enough time that DPW can have the streets clear in time for the parade. And I guess I would say I agree that this is going to be the final year for a number of restaurants. We're going to try and do a better hashed-out plan in 2023, when we have a bit more time to work on it. But I want to kind of give that warning to all restaurants out there, that this has the potential to be your final year for outdoor dining. Just kind of letting everybody know that what we come up with in 2023 may be materially different from what we have for 2022. And I would mention that many of the cities I talked to, that's the approach they're taking. 2022 is kind of the year for everybody to do things as they've been doing it. And in 2023, we're not going to grandfather things in. We're going to start fresh from the ground up. I'll second the initial motion that was made.
Okay. Just to clarify the motion, it's $750 per parking space this year?
This year, that's correct.
Okay. And then it stops, it was before October 15th?
I looked on the calendar, Mayor, the weekend after Indigenous Peoples' Day would put outdoor dining through Sunday, October 16th. Are you trying to get through that Sunday?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, change to 16th.
And then the last one was to over, or disregard the recommendation of staff around public safety around street closures.
Yeah, and in particular, the Clipper Tavern and the Franklin House would be the ones most affected, by my understanding of the.
Counselor Dutton, and then Counselor Moreau, Counselor.
And a friendly, hopefully friendly amendment I'd like to make regards to the square footage, because only the parking space size cost was reduced, I think by a sixth, if I did my math correctly. So the friendly amendment will be that the square footage for outdoor dining would be $2 per square foot. And then the minimum, which previously was $2,000, would be $600. So that.
I accept that amendment, friendly.
Counselor Moreau?
I guess I'm not totally on board with dropping the fee quite so drastically. I think $5,700 to $1,500, and then you're dropping it another 50%, seems a little, way more than I'm probably on board for. I'd be okay with dropping it 50% of where we're at now, like for this year. But I, yeah, so I just think it's way too low. I think it needs to have at least a little bit of an impact to help offset what we might lose, especially with the parking garage being cut back. So that would be my concern, is to, I am all on board with lowering, I'm just not quite maybe as much as has been proposed.
Counselor Cook, and then Counselor Tabor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a point of clarification and then a comment after that. The first, on the October 15th date, is that for all outdoor dining or just outdoor dining in the travelway or in parking spaces?
Thank you, in the travelway and the parking space. So basically, I guess the best way to say it is where the Jersey barriers are in the street.
Okay. And my comment is this. To me, outdoor dining is a real asset for Portsmouth. I am one of those individuals who hasn't gone out to eat in an indoor setting in Portsmouth since the onset of COVID-19. Because I am married to a healthcare professional, we already take on quite a bit of risk, and I'm high-risk for COVID-19. And so we've been extremely cautious. And I think a lot of our residents are in a similar place. In fact, we heard from a lot of residents who still feel the same way. We're not through the pandemic yet. I personally believe that we should continue outdoor dining in the same manner that we did last year, without any additional fees. I realize that this is a transitional year, and that's the way we're thinking about it. But I also believe that we're really late in the year, and we're impacting plans for summer for many restaurants that were already doing their planning based upon the provisions last year. To me, it seems extremely late to be changing rules for them. I would support, in that sense, I'd support nominal fees this year, but I think next year really is the transitional year, because I don't think we're out of the pandemic yet.
First up is Counselor Tabor, and then Counselor Embardi.
Maybe it's because I sit on the fee committee, and that makes me a bit of a revenue hawk, but I also agree with Counselor Moreau that to go from $5,700 down to $750 is a big plunge. You know, we learned a lot in how we manage our parking inventory. how we manage our parking inventory by switching to economic incentives. If you reach two hours, the rate goes from $2 to $5. The average stay now is much lower than two hours, and our parking inventory is turning over a great deal. So I do think there's good sense in managing our street inventory for street dining with some economic tools. And the hard question is how to get that to where a restaurant can afford it, but it still works to manage the inventory. So my friendly amendment would be, let's do 3,000 as our goal and 1,500 this year, if you would accept that. But you don't have to.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking on it. So, Your Honor, if I may, I'll speak to where I came up with the number of 1,500, and.
But you have to you have to take it as a friendly amendment?
Oh, I'll.
Or not?
I'll take it as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have like two friendly amendments.
Oh, we got too much.
We need to streamline a little bit.
Okay, so could we restate the motion as, can you restate the motion?
I have his original.
Okay.
I do. So I have his original. Do you want me to restate it?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just. Yeah, it's way back.
For those at home, Kelly is able to write in Sanskrit. Completely illegible to anybody looking on.
Move to adopt the recommendation fees for setting for to be set at 1,500 per space with a 50% reduction this year. All businesses that operated with dining in 2020 and in 2021, namely businesses operating from would be able to reapply. Operations from June 1st to to Labor Day, and then outdoor dining would end by October 16th or before the Halloween parade. And this will be the final year for some restaurants to give that. So we're giving that warning now, and this has potential for the final year. Many cities are taking 2022 to do things as previously, and 2023, we would start from the ground up. And that was seconded by Counsel Denton. Then Counsel Denton moved to amend as a friendly amendment, the square footage for outdoor dining would be $2 per square foot. The minimum, previously $2,000, would be $600. And then Counsel Bagley accepted that as a friendly amendment.
Sorry, just in interest of trying to get us back on track. So no, that's not, that amendment's not going to do it. Could we restate the amendment as move to amend city suggested fees to 3,000, collecting half of that in first year with outside dining running through October 16th, and be available to all participants from last year? Would that capture the heart of the?
There's two, that does a much better job than what I did, and I apologize for not having this prepared ahead of time, but I was working on it right up till the meeting started. There's two components that are not captured in that. Should we add those on?
Let's get through, I mean, I would say that we should, we should probably just vote on the on the the fees and the length, and then we'll move to whether or not we want to open up other aspects and then potential other aspects to that. Counsel Denton, and then Counsel or Assistant Mayor.
I simply ask that you include the square footage fee as well.
Okay.
Can I do this point of order, Mayor? Before you take a vote on on what to charge, there was a city council policy adopted in 2012 that speaks to area service agreements, which allow for use of city property for sidewalk cafes providing alcohol service. That's where the $10 per square foot comes from. There is a $2,000 minimum that is there, and that's been adopted initially by the council in 2012 and ratified a handful of times, most notably and recently by this council as part of the larger group of policies on January 24th. So I just want to be mindful of that. And to put that in context, there were five area service agreements back in 2019, last year before COVID, when the $2,000 minimum was achieved by Fezziwigs, and then there was Reraw, the district, Raleigh Wine Bar and Popovers. So there is precedent that goes back to 2019 for following this policy. So I guess it would be a question of Bob, if you need, if there was a deviation from the policy that was ratified in January by the council. Did that make any sense?
I think it did. And I believe the answer is that if the city council wants to change a policy now, the council can change it.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that forth.
Counsel or Assistant Mayor, and then Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. This is a question for the city attorney. As most of the public knows and everyone on here, I own a downtown restaurant. And so I just want to put it on record and ask the city attorney, within voting for this policy and within fees, is there is there a conflict?
You, of course, approached Legal Department some time ago. We discussed this, and we viewed the city's code of ethics together. And I concluded that that there is not a conflict for you to vote on this, because the ordinance would not affect you differently than it affects other similarly situated people in the city.
Thank you.
Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a question for the city attorney as well. Is it possible to request individual votes on the additional amendments to the motion, the friendly amendments, rather than just accepting them and moving forward with the vote on the whole?
Yes, it is possible.
Okay. So I would move to request a vote on the friendly amendment, I think the first friendly amendment, and then the second friendly amendment, before we move to a motion on the final, the actual motion, the initial motion.
So before we call a vote, I guess I, what's the first friendly amendment that we're, we would call up?
Yep.
Counsel Denton, do you remember?
That was for the square footage being set at $2.
Yep.
From $10.
Correct.
And the minimum being 600.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, just a point of order on that, those are not fees, those are licenses, correct? The square footage?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're licenses, so they operate differently in that we can't, you know, they're they're set by some calculation to determine if they recoup the cost or not. So the question is, can we, as a council, change that that license cost?
Yes, Your Honor, a council can change the license cost.
Okay.
Your Honor, if I could, one more consideration to keep in mind that there was discussion of allowing the, some restaurants in the higher traffic or travel concern areas to have a shorter period for which barriers would be placed. I can tell you from an operational standpoint, it is much more recommended by DPW to place the barriers all at once and then to remove them all at once. I just asked for that consideration. And in the interest to be helpful, if it thought, if it made sense to call a recess and we could take a break to figure out the best way to move these motions forward, Bob and I would be helpful.
Yeah, we've been here for four hours, so why don't we take a five-minute recess? And if we could come back with a a motion and then amendments to that motion in that time period, we just, that's going to help this process. So.
Thank you. I'd be on board with lowering.
Got to have a motion.
And we're back. We recessed, got some caffeine, and hopefully have an amendment that both the folks at home and we in the council are ready to follow. Andrew, the floor is yours, Councilor Bagley.
I got some guidance from the city attorney while we were in recess. So I am going to motion that we adopt the city's managers.
Could I start with that? Your honor, could we request the unanimous consent of the city council to withdraw all pending motions? And we will start again.
Yeah.
There's a, do we need to move to do that?
Yes, sure.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'm going to start fresh with a clean slate. A motion to adopt the city's managers' recommendations on outdoor dining.
Period.
At this point.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, and now I'm going to immediately make a motion to amend the fee structure to be $3,000 to be charged at a 50% rate of $1,500 per parking space in 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, there was, there was, there was debate. Counselor Cook?
I'm a little bit confused because I thought we were going to take up each motion as they were before, which the initial motion was 1,500 at 50% for the year, not 3,000. So I'm confused.
So what we just did is that the previous motions that were on the table, by unanimous consent, we set them, we set them aside. So Counselor Bagley made a new motion to accept as written the city manager's guidance on outdoor dining. That was the motion. Then he put an amendment on the floor, and that amendment was to take up $3,000, cutting that in half for the first year, for $1,500 to be received in this first year.
Mr. Mayor, I still have a question about that.
Certainly.
My understanding in setting aside all the prior motions was that we would bring back each motion individually as they were made before, and that we would be voting on them, not that we would be considering alternative motions or friendly motions, friendly amendments first.
Once, once all prior motions were withdrawn, the slate is clean, and we're starting over again with the city manager's recommendation as the main motion. Now, it could be that everything was brought forward as it was before with the friendly motions, et cetera, but that's not required, and Counselor Bagley is doing something a little different.
Is there another question?
No, but can we have, can I request a roll call vote?
Certainly.
On the amendment, correct?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
No.
Counselor Cook?
No.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two, the amendment.
I have a second amendment that sidewalk spaces be charged at a fee of $2 per square foot with the minimum to be set at $600. Sorry.
Bless you.
Can you, yeah, I'm sorry.
That the sidewalk spaces be set at a rate of $2 per square foot?
Thank you.
With a minimum of $600.
Second.
Any, oh.
Question? Any? Counsel Taber?
Would this become permanent? I guess that's a question for the city attorney, overriding our policy that we've adopted as a council.
It would become permanent until the council changed it.
Okay.
Would you?
Counselor Denton, then?
Counsel Taber, would you be more comfortable if that was just for this year?
Yes, I certainly would.
And would the maker of the motion be comfortable if the amendment was just for this year?
Yes.
Okay, so at the end of your amendment for 20, the year of 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could speak to it, there are a few restaurants in Portsmouth that don't just, that don't have parking spaces, but only have space like this. I know cafes were mentioned. Kevin Dwyer here was speaking earlier. This would fall in his category, so this would impact restaurants still.
Just a follow-up question for the city attorney. And I, we get to make the rules on this, so I understand. But it's always been my understanding that licenses are created, or the, the cost of a license is created by the, or the amount of the license is created by the cost to administer the license.
It's a council policy, Your Honor, which is based upon that calculation.
Okay. But that's only a council. It's only a council policy. There's nothing specific in state-enabling legislation for licenses. Okay, okay. So the amendment on the table is to move from $10 a square foot for $2 a square foot in the public realm for the year of 2022, and?
That was on sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
For sidewalks, yeah.
Sidewalks, but there were also other, I think Counselor Denton gave an example of Kevin Dwyer's pub, which is a, a street closure, if I believe correctly. That would also be affected by this or any other street closures that areas exist in the public realm.
Well, like the district?
Mm-hmm.
Is on Vaughan Mall?
Correct.
The, the, the place is on Vaughan Mall.
Correct.
Correct.
Those places that, those places that, those that, I believe it was five or six that have continuously used the public realm. This would, this would include that, including loading zones and anything that's not, not a parking space. I would, I would put forth a friendly amendment to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to, to raise that actually a little bit to $5, so incrementally, just, just halving that. Would, would you be opposed to that, Counselor?
I would.
I would, I just am reading into the logic that we initially had of cutting, cutting the space, the, the amount from the original, and it just feels like, you know, and as someone who, to be very transparent, whose business would benefit from, from this lower cost fee, I, I'm one of those, I, I feel like that is a very low amount, and so I would, I would have you consider just that $3 difference to bring it back to five, so that it's, it seems pretty straight ahead, almost 50% cut down from the original recommendation from city and current fee structure for that.
Counselor Cook? Oh, wait, it's a friendly amendment.
You can say no. I'm not going to take it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
This change, would it make it less expensive for restaurants and cafes who are closing streets than it is for those taking up parking spots in front of their businesses?
I think that'd be a city. Does this amendment include travelways? It's sidewalks and travelways, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
City manager, do you, do you know?
Let me take a stab at the question. Parking spaces are currently monetized. Sidewalks, when not used by the public, are not monetized. Travel lanes, when not used for this purpose, are not monetized, so I'm not sure if that helps.
On a square footage level, I don't know. I guess that would be the, the question that you're asking, Counselor Cook? What's the square footage of a parking space?
144, roughly. 187 square feet. Oh, shoot, where's my, where's my Peter Rice, Ben Flacher contingent? Ben, if you're listening, is the, is the size of a parking space 187 square feet or thereabout?
Your Honor? In, in my research?
That's correct. 22 feet by eight and a half for parallel parking. A little less length in, in lots.
But 22 by eight and a half is 187.
Can I change my mind after doing some math on the friendly amendment?
Yes.
I, I will accept that because that would put a parking space-sized spot at $935.
Put it at what?
$935. So I agree with the assistant mayor that maybe $2 was a bit on the low side.
Sure, accepting the $5.
Yes.
For 2022.
And what's the minimum?
$600.
I would.
That, like, if you had 100 square feet times five, and it comes out to $500, you'd still have to pay an additional $100 to meet that minimum threshold. Is that, is my understanding correct?
You're, you're going to hate me again. I would, I would, and before I make this motion, just, I, I think equity needs to be, needs to play, never here and again, repetitive, like, I would benefit from just accepting your motion as, as a business owner, but I would put the threshold at 1,500, which is essentially what we're kind of?
For parking space.
For a parking space, which is what we're equating it to.
The, the, can I speak to that?
You can.
The trouble I have with that is, what if you want to put out two bistro tables? You know, that's far less than a parking spot.
But are we allowed to have friendly discussion on this? Is that?
Not typically.
Okay.
So I guess the, we've cut the, we've cut the, right now, or currently as stands, the fee for the outside realm sidewalks and, and throughways.
Non-monetized.
Non-monetized spots is $10 per square foot and $2,000 minimum. If we cut both of those in half, I think it would get to the point where folks are relatively happy, and if you could take that as a friendly amendment.
So $5 and $1,000.
Yep.
For the year of 2022. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible just to ask the, the city manager for clarification? Because I think there is confusion on this. The sidewalk, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, the sidewalk licensee are also permitted to serve alcohol. There is separate fees, correct, for cafes if you want to put a bistro table in an alleyway or chairs that are not connected to serve an alcohol that are lower fees, correct?
Keep in mind that I've only been here during a pandemic.
Yes.
So I'm looking at, maybe Bob to answer that question. Maybe I can answer my own question. Hold on.
In, in reference, I, I look at like the, the sidewalk, like sidewalk stickers for, for like bistro tables outside of like, let me saw, and we have them in the corner of Cup of Joe Cafe, I'm sorry, Siri's Bakery pays for them out front. So there are?
Sidewalk obstruction.
Yes, I'm sorry, sidewalk obstruction permits. There, there are those for, say, if a, if a cafe wanted to just put two bistros.
Not exclusive to the cafe?
Yes.
And do not allow alcohol.
Correct. So I, I just wanted to put that out there, Counselor Bagley, to answer your question. Obstruction, so including restaurant tables is $75, and then restaurant chairs are $10. So, so those are for restaurants, not cafes, not exclusive to cafes or restaurants, but not serving alcohol and just obstruction. So there are other solutions for restaurants or cafes, again, under, underneath this licensee, the obstruction.
That was my objection, so that's ideal.
Yep, perfect. Sorry, I just wanted to.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Oh, he saved another friendly amendment.
I paid that fee, so I know. Yes, sorry about that.
Okay, so the motion on the table then is to modify or cut in half the proposed cost per foot and minimum fee for the following, for the year 2022. And we will have a, another roll call vote on this.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
No.
Counsel Cook?
No.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Seven to two passes.
Okay, I promised to do better with this one. Another amendment that the timeframe end on October 16th for establishments that require Jersey barriers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll just reiterate, the, the reason I chose this date is because I, I want to have DPW to have enough time to get the streets clear for the Halloween parade, and I think the utilization of the outdoor dining goes down around this time.
Counselor Cook?
While I understand the reasoning behind this amendment, I personally believe that we should extend outdoor dining as long as possible in Portsmouth, as long as possible into the holiday season, because we still have a lot of people coming to Portsmouth to dine outside as late as Thanksgiving, and some would like to dine even in December with heat lamps. So I personally wouldn't ever want to cut off that opportunity if we can extend it through some of our holidays.
Point of order for the, oh, sorry, Counsel Lombardi?
I just wanted to agree with Counselor Cook that I, I think that I would not vote for that amendment because of the same reasons. I think that depending on whether we might want to have outside dining going farther.
City manager, without this amendment, when does outdoor dining end?
As recommended in the memo, Your Honor, it would be the end of November, the Sunday of Thanksgiving weekend, so bear with me.
November 27.
November 27.
That's fine.
Okay. And so not acting on this amendment, that's, or voting this amendment down, it would be to the end of November, and something that we could take up if it was somehow unseasonably warm, but snow removal does to be a pretty big issue. Counselor Bagley?
I'll just speak to it one more time before we vote. I, I enjoy outdoor dining all year round, and there are places to do that. You know, some, some restaurants have patios on their own property or whatever. I also is doing this a little bit as a nod to retailers. They, they, was some requests that the weeks leading up to Black Friday, it'd be nice to get some of those parking spaces back as well. Doesn't really bring a lot back, but it brings some back, so I understand the points the other counselors made. I, I'm going to keep my amendment on the table and I'll vote for it, but I can certainly understand the desire to keep this going as long as possible.
Roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
No.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counsel Moreau?
No.
No. Counsel Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
No.
Counsel Blaylock?
No.
Counsel Cook?
No.
Mayor McCaffrey?
No.
Motion fails, two to seven.
Okay, I have another amendment, and that's in the section under proposed changes. Item number two, traffic circulation. Any proposed use of the travelway must not impact traffic circulation downtown. Changes that result in a significant impact to traffic pattern or that result in a change in the directional pattern of the street will not be considered. Motion that we strike that language.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Moreau?
Could you just say that again?
Yeah, read that.
Because you said it a little too fast for me.
I'll, I'll explain the intent and then I'll read it. So, so roughly, there was a couple restaurants that wouldn't be able to do outdoor dining again because they turned one, streets into one-way streets. This is the section of the, the, that deals with that. And what we would be doing if this was to pass would be allowing those restaurants to continue outdoor dining in 2022. So it's to strike proposed changes, item number two, traffic circulation. Any proposed use of the travelway must not impact traffic circulation downtown. Changes that result in a significant impact to the traffic pattern. Changes that result in a significant impact to the traffic pattern or that result in a change to the directional pattern of the street will not be considered.
Any other discussion?
Who seconded that?
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you.
Council Moreau?
I guess who makes the determina, if we left this language in, who would make the determination of a significant impact?
Your Honor, there would be no determination made. If that amendment passes, there will be no determination.
I know. That's what I'm saying. If the amendment doesn't pass, how would it be determined that something would be a significant? I mean, is there a criteria or is it just?
There would be an area in view permit for the applicant to explain if the request has an impact to traffic.
Okay.
And if so, they would be required to specify.
Okay, thank you.
Simply state on this, I'll pass the gavel, sorry. The, while I understand the intent is to support businesses continuing on, those traffic patterns did negatively impact some other businesses that we did hear from through the course of email. I think it's, it's difficult to weigh those. And I understand that it's an issue of fairness, but for the same reasons, I can't support closing, the changing of the one-way streets again this year. With that, take a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Council Tabor?
No.
Council Dutton?
Yes.
Council Moreau?
No.
Council Bagley?
Yes.
Council Lombardi?
Yes.
Council Blaylock?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
No.
Motion passes six to three.
All right. Did we get through it? I think we did.
Well, we stopped the.
Oh, no. Council Cook, before we vote on this amendment, this hour-long amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say before we vote, I wanted to make a request of our city manager to report back on the number of businesses that had, after, after we go through this process, to report back on the number of businesses that chose not to apply for outdoor dining again this year. And I was hoping maybe we could do a survey of those restaurants to find out if, what their reasoning was, if it was fee structure in particular.
Think that is, we don't need a motion.
Your Honor, what you need is a vote on the original motion as amended.
Okay. So we'll have a roll call vote on the original motion as amended. That is with reduced fees, both on the parking spaces and the, and the square footage. It is with the original, with no change to the end date per the city manager, and it is with striking the language that prohibited those businesses that required a travel lane change to be a part of outdoor dining. All right. So with that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Council Tabor?
Yes.
Council Dutton?
Yes.
Council Moreau?
Yes.
Council Bagley?
Yes.
Council Lombardi?
Yes.
Council Blaylock?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right.
Moving right along to item number three, the approval of the Dear Street Associates Parking Agreement. Back in 2016, the city entered into a post-closing obligations agreement with Dear Street Associates, which facilitated the city's acquisition of the land upon which the Foundry Garage now sits. As you may know, the city had a duty under that agreement to deliver a parking agreement to DSA, which would in general terms provide DSA with 68 parking passes in the garage, which DSA would pay for at a market rate. What we're looking to do tonight is to satisfy the city's contractual responsibilities under that post-closing obligations agreement. The legal department would recommend that the city council authorize the manager to execute a parking agreement with DSA in a form substantially similar to that which is attached and provided in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Council Moreau?
I'd just like to state that the agreement is indeed what we have, are contractually obligated to carry out. And there's nothing in it that, yeah, that we can really have a whole lot of effect on based off of the requirements under our original agreement.
Any other comment? The city attorney, you have put this on, or through the city manager, put this on the agenda. Could you speak to the city's legal position?
I would just make it clear, Your Honor, that both myself and outside council would recommend that the council pass this motion.
Thank you. Without any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. All right.
Thank you. The last item under City Manager's Action Items is a request for 64 Von Mall. With us here tonight are folks from the project, Shane Forsley, and with Nova Cure, Dean Smith, and Dean was joined by his colleague, Bill Burke. So we're fortunate to have them in the audience. The council will remember that back in August of 2021, the planning board granted site plan approval for renovation of the building known as the Margeson Building and construction of an addition at 64 Von Street. The property has since been conveyed to Nova Cure, a local medical device company, in December of 2021, and Nova Cure will renovate and use the 42,000-square-foot building for their corporate headquarters and their flagship North American headquarters. Back in November of 2021, the Construction, Mitigation and Management Plan identified temporary encumbrances for project-related work, which brings us here tonight, which is the project proponent is seeking a license request to use 35 square feet of land in the Von Mall and 14 parking spaces in the Worth Lot for a total of 90 days to begin March 5th and to end June 3rd. And the purpose of this is to set up scaffolding so that the applicant can work on the facade of the building that abuts the Worth Lot, formerly known as the Wailing Wall. So when you take the amount of square foot, square footage in the Von Mall and add that to the parking space fee, the total license fee would come to $44,257.50. And during the term of this license, it's important to note that the owner will work with the Director of Public Works to create a pilot for the reconfiguration of the Worth Lot before finalizing the permanent improvements as set forth in a separate development agreement that was approved by the city council on November 15th of 2021. Both legal and planning have reviewed and approved the form of the attached license.
Your Honor, I move the city manager be authorized to execute and accept the temporary construction license for the term of March 5, 2022 to June 3, 2022, the use of 35 square feet of land in the Von Mall and 14 parking spaces in the Worth Lot as requested.
Second.
Any discussion? Council Bagley?
I'm just gonna briefly mention, thanks to the gentleman that had to stay here through the last motion. I appreciate you being in the audience. There was an article in the paper when Nova Core decided to move to Portsmouth, and it might have been the CEO, somebody high up in the company, said that, you know, the reason they picked Portsmouth is because of the quality of life in our downtown especially. Nova Core is a company with a very important medical mission, doing great stuff. And, you know, they really could have chosen to locate this anywhere in the world. And I think the fact that they chose downtown Portsmouth is a great credit to our city, and I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank the gentleman here tonight. I know losing parking spaces is always a challenge, especially in a, in a lot like Worth Lot, but I think, you know, we should be cognizant of the fact that, you know, something really great has come to town, and we should be proud that they chose us over many other locations.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one question, and I'd echo all the sentiments that Council Bagley shared. My question is around the term of the license. And just for clarity, because this has come up before, is this the expected duration of the project as we know it now, understanding, you know, we could have externalities? And I think we just have to motion to suspend the rules to, so I move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Or, sorry, I can't motion.
Motion to suspend the rules, Your Honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Shane.
Mayor, Shane Forsley from Hampshire Development Corporation. We're the GC for the project. On behalf of Nova Cure, thank you all for your time tonight. And to answer your question, the project is targeted with an 18-month duration, which we've shrunk down to 15 months at this point in time. That period of time that we'd utilize the Worth Lot would be for the facade and the new construction component of the building.
So would you expect to need, I guess, I just want to set the, the understanding expectation. Will you be coming back to extend this, provided that the facade and all of that goes to plan? And I hope that it does. But if you're on, on time with that, would we expect these spaces to come back into the public realm, or will you require those in a future phase of the project?
That's correct. So in that 90-day period, we intend to complete the work as stated and then give back the land.
Great. Thank you, Shane, so much, and appreciate you being here.
Thank you all.
All right. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right. So for the consent agenda, wait the proper motion for adoption of the consent agenda. Move to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then email correspondence, wait a sample motion to move and place on file.
To accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we are on to us councilors here. Okay. Oh, sorry.
You.
Nope.
B and C.
Sorry, we have a letter from Mr. James Hewitt regarding the installation of the EV stations. Do we need a sample motion to move to?
Your Honor, move we accept and place on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A petition from residents of Elwin Park opposed the installation of sidewalks in the neighborhood.
Move that we accept and place on file? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resubmission of letter from Gretchen Rath, Portsmouth Fabric Company, requesting retailers to be invited to any meetings convened regarding downtown parking.
Move we accept and place on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the resubmission of letters from various downtown businesses regarding outdoor dining and the use of parking spaces.
Move to accept and place on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have some appointments to be considered under my name. Duncan McCollum to the Cemetery Committee, Elaine Apatak Bux to the Citywide Neighborhood Blue Urban Committee, Kathleen Bodak to the Citywide Neighborhood Blue Urban Committee, Lawrence Gattaldo to the Citywide Neighborhood Blue Urban Committee, William Gottschall to the Citywide Neighborhood Blue Urban Committee, Lori Soloway to the Citywide Neighborhood Blue Urban Committee, Peter Samsich to the Citywide Neighborhood Blue Urban Committee, Ann Wideman as an alternate to the EDC, Heinz Sock Schubert as an alternate to the Historic District Commission, Jeff Stern to the Library Board of Trustees, Jason Brewster to the Pierce Island Committee, Francesca Marconi Fernald to the Pierce Island Committee, Chris Gallo to the Pierce Island Committee, Steve Marison to the Pierce Island Committee, Stephen Philip to the Pierce Island Committee, Devin Quinn to the Pierce Island Committee, John Simon to the Pierce Island Committee, Richard Smith to the Pierce Island Committee, Mark Stettner to the Pierce Island Committee, William Townsend to the Pierce Island Committee, Kathleen Bergeron to the Portsmouth Housing Authority, Lauren Krantz to the Recreation Board, and Phyllis Elidridge to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. These are all appointments to be considered and will be brought forth at the next meeting. Appointments to be voted. We have Genevieve Alshiel to the Blue Urban Committee on Portsmouth Arts and Nonprofits. Mr. Jeffrey Barakoff has requested that his name be withdrawn, so we will simply be voting on the appointment of Genevieve. If I could have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we also have, under my name, the resignation of Craig Jewitt from the Portsmouth Housing Authority. A sample motion, move to accept his resignation with regret and send a letter to Mr. Jewitt thanking him for his service to the city.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jewitt. Appreciate the work that you've done. All right. Proposed citywide goals. Got to find them here because I plan to read them, but a sample motion, move to approve, let me just, oh, perfect, paper copies still work sometimes here. So I plan to read these and then move to accept them if there's, we'll have a discussion. But the genesis of this was the retreat where we talked about the goals of this council. You know, show me your budget, I'll show you your values. These are our values as clearly as we could define them into goals, both for ourselves, the general government, and the school board, which has carried over from use previous. We left those as such. So city council goals. The first, invite and honor input from the community and encourage increased participation, engagement of youth. Two, identify and promote strategies for local business retention and the preservation of affordable commercial spaces. Three, leverage local resources and partnerships to improve and support needs of residents, nonprofit, arts, and cultural community. Four, proactively pursue the integration of sustainability, resilience, and climate change mitigation actions throughout city government and community. Five, diversify and enhance the supply of housing choices. Six, continuously enhance city council best practices to deliver a trusted, transparent, and responsive process. Seven, consistently communicate with community members and stakeholders, respecting channels of communication they prefer and keeping them informed. Under general government, welcome and support diversity in the workplace and community. Nine, maintain financial stability. Ten, meter exceeds state and federal legal regulatory requirements, including those for a safe and healthy community and environment. Eleven, deliver services and programs with courtesy, professionalism, and efficiency. Twelve, maintain and improve infrastructure to meet needs of the community. School board, provide an educational environment that affords opportunity, equity, student wellness, and a strong sense of community to every youth. And fourteen, protect the community through fire and crime cessation and prevention for its residents and business. That's the school board fire police commission goals. So with that, and I'll accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. And any discussion on these? Oh, Council Moreau, and then Council Bagley.
I'd just like to say I really thank the city staff that took everything that we said that day and were able to make it so decisive into a really comprehensive, I'm just impressed, thoroughly impressed. So thank you.
Council Bagley?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, these goals, I think we, we had a, we talked for a long time to come up with them, and we really got to see that engagement piece in action over the last week or so with the community. And, you know, we really value when you reach out to us through emails, through the Contact All City Counselor button on the website. Your feedback is really important, and the more of it we get, the better informed our decisions will be made. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments? So just so everyone is aware, these will align into our budget, and they will be mapped, items in the budget of which we will be spending. to items in the budget of which we will be spending tax dollars looking to achieve. So everything will be tied back to a goal here. So this is a budget document as much as it is goals and hopefully an effort for us to be held accountable. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The last was a... I was lucky enough to attend a opening of Families First, which is moved for those... Oh, sorry. Is there a comment?
Actually, a motion, Mr. Mayor, to extend beyond 10:30 p.m. Or is it 10:30?
It is. Like 13 seconds past 10:30. But all right, we'll keep it. I'll accept a motion to move past 10:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are officially past 10:30 on my anniversary.
Give her a gift.
So the final item under my name, I was fortunate to be able to go to the opening of Families First new facility. It's off of... Well, it's behind Greenleaf. It's where the old school gym was quite a while ago. And it came up in conversation, a request that there be a coast bus stop closer to where that is located on Greenleaf. Right now, it would have to go all the way up, pass Bowerama, take a right, pass crossroads and back there, and it's really difficult for a bus to turn around. And what I thought about this is, one, for a report back on feasibility of this, but also how can we give input to transportation in Coast in terms of bus stops and their general availability within the community? We talk a lot about housing and transportation is a part of that, but I'm simply requesting a report back on that, but happy to have comments. I see Council Moreau itching to make one.
Just for the record, I actually am not only an owner at Greenleaf Woods Drive where Families First is now located, but I also sit on the Board of Directors.
Okay.
So I have probably will have a lot of ideas and probably can help on that because I think stopping buses on that narrow road is going to be really difficult too. So I have some other thoughts on that. So I would love to be part of that conversation to help.
Absolutely. So the goal first of this is simply feasibility around how could that be made accessible, but then the process, you know, as we are changing the city, to make sure that we are helping Coast serve our community. You know, we do help Coast, but we'd want to make sure that we're able to offer some thoughts around those bus stops. Council Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a representative to the Coast bus service? I know in the past the city council had a representative.
We haven't had a city council rep in the recent past. Currently, Parking Director Ben Fletcher is on the Coast Board on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Okay. That could be a part of the report back in terms of the process with Coast and how we're getting updates to the council on Coast. All right. But I won't go on any longer. Appreciate the time on that. Council Tabor, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proposing a motion that the city manager is authorized to take any and all actions necessary within her judgment to cause the city of Portsmouth to become party to the Joint Powers Agreement of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire as presented, which became effective October 1, 2021.
Second.
Okay. I'm advancing this with the support of the Energy Advisory Committee that met February 9th and voted unanimously to recommend the council vote to join C P C N H. It's the first step on a journey to aggregation of our electric demand, give residents a way to buy greener power and maybe cheaper power as well. It's important to note that this step is just joining the coalition. We would have to come back to the council and have a vote to develop a community power plan, which is required by statute, to send anything more in motion. What we can do between now and then is go out, explain this to the public, and we'd like to do a survey to see the public's interest and appetite to pay for a menu of, say, 50% green power, 100% green power, a series of options. So tonight's step is not a commitment to buy power from C P C N H or to become the default provider or anything like that. It's just to join the coalition. Doesn't cost the city anything except some staff time and we gain a seat on the Board of Directors. I'm happy to say that Kevin Sharet of our Energy Advisory Committee has volunteered to fill that board seat. Three benefits and then we'll go to a vote and discussion. I think it's the single biggest thing we can do to reduce our carbon footprint. Cities and towns that have done this, like Marin County, California, have gone from 20% renewable electricity to 50% in just four to five years. I think C P C N H will... an aggregation will create more competition among suppliers and states that have allowed aggregation to really accelerate have shown over time lower overall rates in their state. And we can be part of driving that. And lastly, as C P C N H represents right now 20% of the residents of the state, and that will grow, they can be a buying consortium that will expand renewables, create a market for hydro, solar, wind, and I think that shapes our energy future and we can be part of that too. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Council Tabor, any questions? Council Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to voice my full support for this motion. I recently joined the committee with Council Tabor and I think that the committee has done exemplary work in reviewing the whole process around community power and the Community Power Coalition. It's important to remember that we're just giving ourselves the option at this stage to enter into agreement. We're not actually ultimately agreeing to buy power yet. We're just giving ourselves that option. And anybody who's been buying power on the market lately or has had to switch their power supplier recently knows that it's very difficult to make these decisions. A lot of residents face a difficult decision when trying to find renewables and a good renewable supplier for their energy. This allows us to provide them reassurance that they're actually getting renewable energy when they choose a supplier through, potentially through community power if we choose to go that way. And it allows us to make sure that we offer that alternative to our residents. So I would urge everyone to support this.
Council Blalock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Council Tabor for bringing this forward. Any step to move forward in climate change mitigation to make us more of a net-zero city, I appreciate that effort. And I do want to remind the citizens that we haven't made any decisions that cost anything yet. We can leave this agreement whenever we choose, so nothing has been spent yet. Thank you, Council Tabor.
Thank you.
It's a thank you.
All right. Well, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Council Tabor. Council Denton, we have... What's in? I'm seeing outdoor dining fees.
I want to make a different motion.
Okay. Different motion. So Kelly's going to have to work hard on this.
All right. So I'm going to motion for city staff to work with the Fee Schedule Study Committee to develop fees for food service establishments on city property that violate the composting requirements of the distribution of single-use disposables on city property ordinance. I could say that again. It's a modification of what was originally in front of you.
Yep.
So again, it's motion for city staff to work with the Fee Schedule Study Committee to develop fees for food service establishments on city property that violate the composting requirements of the distribution of single-use disposables on city property ordinance.
Second.
So regardless of any actions that anyone takes in the next 30 years, sea levels is going to rise one foot by 2050, and food waste is the third-largest emitter of greenhouse gases worldwide because methane is dozens of times more potent than carbon dioxide is. However, the expansion of outdoor dining on city property gives us the city an opportunity to actually go ahead and enforce some of the 2019 single-use disposables on city property ordinance that requires a number of things, including composting. And by passing this motion, it simply allows the fees committee to start actually allowing fees as allowed by the ordinance to go forward. Many restaurants currently spend up to $1,000 a month on composting between having the... if I remember correctly, if you have a single bin of compost picked up five days a week, that's $450 a month. And then the actual composting disposables, the flatware, the utensils, that could be over $500 a month as well. So you have some smaller restaurants spending $1,000 a month, larger restaurants spending far more. And if we could have an impact by starting to enforce this ordinance on food establishments that use city property, whether it be parking spaces, sidewalks, what have you, to either level the playing field for those that are currently good stewards and that do compost, or encouraging those that currently do not compost to start composting, I think it's a step in the right direction.
And that's... There's a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think, Your Honor. I appreciate Council Denton bringing this up. My only concern would be to add fees to restaurants at this time. I mean, obviously, we're still in this pandemic, we're still wearing masks. I understand I've, you know, we've composted at my restaurant for several, several years just in doing good due diligence to try to treat the earth better and, you know, take care of the world around us. But yeah, that would be my only concern, is that we were adding a cost of operation for those restaurants. But I do appreciate enforcing this, you know what I mean? So we move forward with composting and encourage that as much.
Council Blalock? Oh, Council... or Assistant Mayor?
I would also like to show support. I think that it's also important that at some point when we look through the next master plans and potentially the next round of C I P is that we look at composting throughout our city. Council Denton and I have had several conversations where it's hard sometimes to justify for a small business to justify spending the increased costs, especially when the cost of goods, especially disposables, have gone up in some cases well over 100% to 200% and the cost of compostable goods are even more than that, to justify as a small business spending that money when essentially, especially if it's, say, a cup of coffee or, you know, anything like that, when the customer is going to go out and throw that into the trash can that's provided them by the city and therefore almost completely waste any due diligence done by the business. So I would think that especially when we get into the Climate Action Plan and we get into the Sustainable Committees, we look at some resources that the city can put in to help increase compostability and recycling within our downtown and city and business departments.
On that note, the only... or the only concern I have with this from a fee standpoint is, as I understand it right now, there's only really one private outfit that collects composting in the city. So I would hope that there would be, you know, I would feel more comfortable about increasing penalties or, you know, making penalties if this was a service that the city provided or there was, you know, other competition in there. But I appreciate the spirit of which this is offered and hope that we can work, you know, into this, a broader discussion on how we make composting make sense for businesses but also Portsmouth more broadly. But I think this will get to that, this discussion would be a part of the fee committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Council Bagley?
Yes, so my item tonight is Elwin Park Traffic Calming and Pedestrian Improvements. And my motion would be to move T S M dash 17 dash P L dash 59, Elwin Park Traffic Calming and Pedestrian Improvements from fiscal years '24 and '25 in the C I P to fiscal year '23 as a $1.66 million to be bonded.
Second.
So we heard from some residents, both for and against this tonight. I think it's important that our elementary schools are as equitable or treated the same in all three locations as we can. And, you know, my daughter went to Little Harbor. I've been to the other two elementary schools a number of times. And for pedestrian, especially a small child walking up to the school, you know, Elwin Park, the Dondaro School, the situation there kind of, in my opinion, falls short. I thought it'd be important to move this forward for several reasons. What's in the C I P is just a placeholder. So if it's in '24, if it's in '25, that doesn't mean it's going to happen in '24 or '25. It means that next year, in theory, it'll be voted upon and adopted in the budget, but it could also get pushed out another year. And as we heard from some speakers tonight or we saw in some emails, you know, people have been waiting for this from when their kids were in kindergarten to now they're off to college. We did get, I'm just going to read very briefly, a snippet from a letter to the editor written by a parent when her child was in kindergarten. And the snippet is, "Walking towards Dondaro, there's about four feet of clearance separating us from passing cars. Little kids can cover that distance in one stumble and little kids are almost continuously stumbling, especially when they're trying to maneuver in clunky snow boots and bibs, encumbered by backpacks. Parents, we're all busy. I honestly don't know how those of you with multiple children handle it all, and I applaud you, but we are the village and we have to be better at looking out for each other. It cannot take a tragedy to remind us that we genuinely care for our neighbors." As I mentioned, this letter to the editor was written when her child was a kindergartner. They just entered, well, they're just about finished with the eighth grade. We heard from some speakers tonight that, you know, we need more time to build consensus. There's a report that was issued in 2019. I hope you all had a chance to look at it. You know, there's over 70% consensus in the neighborhood. This has been going on for literally decades at this point. The other point, which is more of a technical point, is we're planning to resurface the roads in Elwin Park, half of them. If we were to do this next year or the year after, we'd have some sunk costs where we were digging up roads that we just resurfaced to put sidewalks in if we did in fact vote for them or if the next council did vote for them. So I wanted to move this forward, understanding the challenges it puts on our Public Works and Finance Department, primarily because I think it's a very important issue. It's the safety and equity of our children at the elementary school level, in my opinion. Thank you, Your Honor.
Council Barty?
I have a question. And one of the issues that was brought up by one resident at least was that he felt that he was going to lose some of his property. What is the status of the right-of-way, the street right-of-way and the property lines? Is that clear? Will they have to take property to do this?
Peter Ray should answer this, but the short answer is no. But the right-of-way extends into what people typically view as their own lawn. When I became a homeowner, I was surprised to find out I didn't own all of my lawn, as most homeowners find that out. This would be an example of while you're currently maintaining it, the city does have access to that and it is in the city right-of-way. I would imagine that that is the plan for the sidewalk, but one gentleman's point of not being able to park his cars or four cars in a garage would probably be true because it would encumber the sidewalk in that case if the cars were going as far down as they were.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure.
Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the pleasure of attending Dondaro School as a child. I had the pleasure of riding my bicycle around that neighborhood and grew up in the woodlands. Me and Mayor spent a lot of time on McKinley Road there. I also moved right next door to Little Harbor in sixth grade, so I had a very good, quick perspective. I will say the entrances to Little Harbor and New Franklin are much safer than Dondaro. That neighborhood, it's, I know this, we've always been a plan to make it safer. It was a lot quieter 20 years ago. I've seen the traffic going down McKinley, going into the school. I'm also friends with some of the neighbors that write, that are right at the entrance. And the image that Counselor Bagley just described of, you know, a young child stumbling or something on his way to school, a sidewalk's gonna make that much safer. You know, you separate that, you create a curb, you, you know, the cars, now they have to go up on the, you know, there's just a whole, it makes it a lot safer. I've seen the white lines that are there now, you know, and I understand that cars are always parking on it. If you go on Google Earth, you'll probably find a car blocking that back, that bike lane. So I'm glad this is in the CIP. I noticed that it did get moved back before in the CIP. My only question would be, did it get moved back previously because there was not a consensus on this plan?
The, the general answer to the question is it was just a reprioritization of items within the CIP.
Excellent.
Counselor Cook?
Oh, and then Counselor Moreau. Sorry, I gotta write them down.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this motion because I think it's part of a bigger picture, providing walkability to all residents of Fort Smith within their neighborhoods. Elwin Park is difficult on the really busy streets as far as walking goes. It was obvious to me when I was walking door to door and meeting residents in Elwin Park, that the traffic was, was vibrant, is what I would say, and could be very dangerous, especially for young children. I think that we've put this off more than once. It's time to consider improving pedestrian walkability outside the center of the city especially, and Elwin Park should be a priority for us because it's so close to Dondaro School.
Counselor Moreau?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to check with the city manager and possibly with Director Peter Rice, as to, one, are we going to have any issues with our percentage of bond? That we always try to stay under that percentage, because I can't remember now off the top of my head where we are if we move this to this year. And, two, whether or not we're gonna have any issues with staffing to actually get it done within fiscal year 23.
So I would ask, I would need for the finance folks to report back what adding $1.6 million would do. Then we don't, we want to stay within 10 percent.
Right.
And, and we're hovering around the 8.19 or 8.2 percent, give or take. We can certainly provide that in a report back, perhaps in an email as quickly as possible, so the council has that well in advance of the March 7 meeting. And I'm sorry, the second question had to do with staff and resources.
Yeah, whether or not we have the resources to actually make it happen.
That one I'm gonna have to turn to Peter for help.
Good evening again. Staffing is a challenge for a lot of our projects, but staffing isn't really what drives the schedule in this. There are two drainage areas that impact the plans for sidewalks in this area, so that will probably have a larger impact on the project than, than our staffing availability. The paving work we're gonna do is, we're gonna stay away from the two areas that were recommended for sidewalks, which is McKinley and Harding. And then the paving will be done on either side of that, or done on the south side of that. So it's not precluding the work. There's, there's additional design work that would need to be done. The mayor's correct, the right-of-way is more than adequate to handle the sidewalk addition without having to do any takings. But it's, it's a matter of, you know, it needs to be designed, it needs to be coordinated with other work. And, you know, there is, there is a process, even though there was more consensus around, you know, a revised plan, there still is a lot of dialogue going on with residents out there relative to acceptance of the proposed project. And, you know, like all our projects, we try to, to work with folks and make this as acceptable as possible. So staffing is a challenge, and it always will be a challenge, but we balance the work we do. And, you know, if, if it was lined up to move forward, it would happen, but there's still pieces that need to be put in place before it can go forward this year.
Counselor Lombardi?
Another question, I think, for Peter, is that many times when you do street work, you also do some utility work. Is that part of the plan, too?
No, there's, there's, there's no plan to do utility work out there, other than drainage. So the drainage is, is one piece that's kind of holding us up.
So you're going to install Storm Green?
There's some existing infrastructure that needs to be increased in size.
Yep.
And the outlet, which is gonna go across Elwin Road to discharge into the Urban Forestry Center, is part of that work. So we're gonna be doing a side, the Elwin Road side path is gonna start the drainage outlets, and then we're gonna work our way up. So it's, it's a combination of a couple things. But we're planning on moving forward with getting the design work going associated with this. And it's, so the project's gonna be moving forward, it's just not gonna move forward all this year.
Thank you.
Assistant Mayor?
I'm not exactly sure if this would be a motion or a request, or, based on what Director Peter Rice said, is it possible to, before we potentially vote on this table this, or, or the next steps, to schedule a walk, to schedule a walk around the neighborhood? Would, would you be, like, I don't know if that's a friendly amendment, or if that's just a, a separate motion to try to schedule potentially a walk around the neighborhood to try to get some more general consensus before voting on this motion?
So we'll have to, we'll have to move the vote on this motion out, because I don't think we'll be able to get down there tonight.
Ray, we're going?
But if we were to say, March 5th, which is a Saturday that morning, is that something that, looking at calendars?
I believe that's the last weekend of school vacation.
Right.
Okay, yeah, next week is school vacation, so we're gonna have a lot of people that are
Oh, yes.
that are out, myself included, for school vacation. So we might have a
If, if I may make a suggestion, the budget process, you know, there is another bite at the apple in terms of, I mean, you have the, the next meeting that you could adjust this at, so there's time to, to, to look at this further. And then also in the budget adoption process, you can again bring this forward in, in terms of adjustment. So there is another opportunity to move this forward. And, and where there is such a need for the design process, and we do have current funding available to start the design process, to move the sidewalks along, it's, the process is not being held up by scheduling this money at this moment. There's, you know, we can still make forward motion on this project, have a public process, have the, have the sidewalk with the opportunity to bring it, instead of it being 24, 25, the funding likely wouldn't be needed until 24 anyway. So the design process could continue to move on, and you could firm things up and, and have a bit more consensus, at least from the council standpoint, on how to move forward. So I just, just offer that up as a potential path forward.
So just to clarify that path forward, we would split out in the CIP monies that would be associated with the design portion, and then in 24, put the, the bulk of the money for the implementation? Is that a suggestion?
There is currently $90,000 available for the, starting the design and getting it moved forward. So that, I believe, would be enough to, to really firm up the location of the sidewalk, and to, you know, to clearly show, you know, how it's gonna be implemented. And then in 24, the monies to implement could be allocated.
So just to clarify, that money doesn't, that money, it already exists, it doesn't need to be appropriated in a CIP?
Correct. Yep, it's, it's available monies.
Okay. So if we could somehow, you know, I understand the frustration of folks that feel as though this is ongoing for a very long time. But I also know that it's, until we, the, the process of actually planning this, there's a lot of people that will not provide their, their input as, in a real, or in a non-theoretical sense. So if we start getting that, that feedback, as we've done with, say, Bartlett Street right now, I think that would be a, a good, not compromise, because it's actually moving the process forward, but get more buy-in from the neighborhood and a realization of what exactly is there with the money to stay in 2024, because we wouldn't start the project before then. Is there any way that we could, I guess, sorry, I'm I'm not doing my job as mayor, I'm talking. But is there any way that we could more clearly show that those funds have been identified for this purpose for the public in, in, in the CIP or anywhere else for this? And I've looked at maybe finance?
I have to look to Andrew, but I believe it was previous year's CIP funding, and we could get the, where that funding was, when it was allocated, and I believe it was $150,000 originally, Andrew? Okay, so there was, there was monies originally allocated to start the design. Some of those monies were spent. There's, there's $90,000 available in the fund at this time.
Your Honor.
Counselor Bagley?
I, I guess I would move that we table this, so that we can schedule a walkabout, continue discussion with city staff. And I think it's pretty clear that at least some of us on the council would like to see this move forward as expeditiously as possible. So I don't know that we need to pass a motion tonight for anything. We, we can gather more data. But my position that this should be a priority project is, hasn't changed, but it sounds like taking a vote tonight may be a bit hasty.
Well, we do need to vote to table it unless you
Your Honor, Doc?
Remove the motion?
Or he could withdraw his motion.
I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay.
Second.
And we're good? And we'll work to schedule, we'll work to schedule an onsite per the Assistant Mayor's request, and we'll do that with the coordination of the council and not to align with school vacation. Counselor Cook?
I just had a point of clarification. Just because we allocate the funds for fiscal year 23, that doesn't mean that they have to move forward, right, and bond them immediately until the project is ready. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
It, it would impact our debt schedule, so we would want to have it in the appropriate year.
Okay. Counselor Lombardi and Counselor Taber, the floor is yours for a report back regarding proposed cargo facility at the trade port.
Thank you. Well, Counselor Taber and I met with PDA Director Paul Breen, and this meeting was pretty much to help me learn more about the work of the PDA. We discussed varied development areas of the trade port, the uses of allowed areas, and some of the potential new areas of development. It's, it's a pretty amazing place and pretty diverse. But we then focused most on the proposed development of the cargo facility, because that's, that's the real big question out there at the moment, and where it is in the planning process. At this point, there's an agreement to explore the feasibility. And this is at a very, very early stages, and we'll, and we'll take into consideration, among other things, environmental impact, traffic and noise studies. Something?
Oh, the folks are just leaving.
Oh, okay. The, the project comprises two sites for warehousing. One is currently the property of Hangar 227, a large empty Air Force hangar in the middle of the runway. And then the other is the Back 40, they call it, the apron at the Newington end of the runway, where a large facility of probably 250,000 square feet is proposed. I know the newspaper article had some other numbers in there, but I think what, what Mr. Breen said was, it'll probably end up around 250,000 feet. He could not talk about the potential tenants, and he said that because the project would be built by a developer, it is a, and it's at a secondary airport, it is more attractive to be a niche, to a niche provider than a corporate entity. What that means is that, well, the big providers, the big transport companies are, are less interested, but that doesn't exclude them. He said that the, they, the corporate tenants would prefer primary airports over secondary ones, such as P's, and airports that do not have large percentage of their distribution area being the ocean. They'd rather have, be surrounded by land where they can do their deliveries. All that being said, we still do not know who the tenant would be. And, and he said he doesn't know, but he probably has a list somewhere. But he thinks that it more likely would be a niche tenant that could provide service to smaller local businesses and regional, local and regional businesses rather than large corporations. He said that a niche provider would probably be the last mile terminal facility. So they would be using what he calls sprinter vans rather than tractor trailers in their deliveries. And so the impact on the road infrastructure would be that rather than semis. He also said, and as he said in the newspaper, he thinks that the, the facility could be supported by daytime air traffic and, rather than nighttime flights. And there's still a need for highway traffic studies, as well as environmental and noise studies. And I, they're also talking about the effort to increase commerce through our port, the, the water port, as well as encouraging wind energy in the ocean. So it's a big project. It's, it's fascinating. We did not talk about how many jobs it might employ, or what kind of, what the quality of those jobs are. But I think it would be quite a few jobs. So that's my understanding from our, our conversations. I don't know, John, if you have more to add to that?
Yeah, Counselor Lombardi's done the play-by-play. I'll try to do a little color commentary. I think our takeaway is where, right now, the air freight industry is really rapidly changing, and there's this bubble of demand for warehouses next to a runway, where the plane can come in, unload, stock inventory on shelves. And so these developers are building this with a list of potential tenants. And they want to move very quickly. What we heard from, from Mr. Breen was the notion that this is like a Federal Express hub with dozens of flights at night, and everything is urgent, has to be out the next day, is, is dozens of flights at night, and everything is urgent, has to be out the next day, is completely the opposite of what is actually going to happen there. This is going to be, you have five units, five widgets, and you draw down that inventory for local delivery, and then you replenish it. So you're talking about a number of flights per week, not per day, and mostly daytime flights. So I think a lot of the speculation that we've been seeing is a little off the base. And the next steps will be, they'll come with a conceptual plan to P's. We sort of delegate our planning department responsibility to the trade port for projects over there. So the P's board will hear the whole conceptual plan in probably May, and that's the point where public input could come in. The other commissioners, Peggy Lamson and Commissioner from Greenland, are very concerned about congestion and noise in air flights, and they're insisting on traffic counts and traffic studies, which will happen. So we'll learn more about it. It's a, it has the potential to be very large, but it will start off in phases. So that's what we know at this point.
Yep.
Thank you both. Any questions? Councilor Moreau?
Anything that happens at P's also does come to the planning board here in Portsmouth.
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah, ultimately, we do get to at least review it and hear from residents, so, because I do think, one of the things we really need to keep in mind is they might have a certain tenant that they're kind of building this for now, but it's going to be there for a long time, so it doesn't mean other tenants can't move in. So I think we have to be conscientious as every, you know, time we, you know, change an ordinance or whatnot, this is for the long haul, and it could be a smaller hub for one of those bigger companies at some point and need more, so.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that we stay weary of that.
It could be multiple tenants.
It could be. So I just think we need to make sure we're weary of that and stay on top of it.
Councilor Lombardi.
One of the things about it is that anything that goes into P's is regulated by the FAA. They are responsible for the zoning, P's is responsible for the zoning of that whole property, and it comes under the rules of the FAA.
Well, thank you both for bringing that. I know there's a lot of questions there. The PDA is something that, you know, even when you're on the council for a couple of years, it's still somewhat mysterious. I know that we're planning a visit there as a council. I think that will be good, and I think at some point to have a sit-down with the PDA would be in order to discuss this, but thank you for the update. And we will move on to... Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor.
Cultural plan for Portsmouth.
Yes. I move to approve of a new cultural plan for Portsmouth to be commenced in 2022 based on a scope of work outlined by the Portsmouth Arts and Nonprofits Committee, noting that the request for development of a cultural plan in 2022 was included in the committee's 2021 year-end report to the City Council on December 20th, 2021, and request that the city manager identify the appropriate funding source for said cultural plan.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to pass my cultural plan down to the council so everyone can see the last cultural plan that we had for the city of Portsmouth, which is in 2002. It's been 20 years since we adopted a cultural plan. Now, the significance of the cultural plan is it's really what we would call a strategic plan for culture and nonprofits in Portsmouth. And part of the reason that we haven't revised and adopted a new cultural plan is that we haven't had a mechanism to do that truly at the city level until the last few years. We used to have an arts committee, a standing arts committee, the Arts Speak, that worked on the provisions of this cultural plan, and when they achieved the goals that were outlined in it, Arts Speak dissolved. So as a result, no one, there was no one organized to reinstitute a new cultural plan and a new strategic plan and vision. The Arts and Nonprofits Committee started meeting as a result of the pandemic and made this recommendation to the City Council. We are a little bit behind, clearly. Usually you don't wait 20 years to develop a cultural plan. Many of our major arts organizations in the city aren't even mentioned in our existing cultural plan because they didn't exist at that time. So it's important to remember that, you know, cities change, and we need to redevelop new strategic plans as we change and evolve. I wanted to highlight for all of you the Americans for the Arts study findings with regard to the contribution of arts and nonprofits, cultural organizations to the city of Portsmouth. In Portsmouth, spending, total spending by nonprofit arts and cultural organizations and for, by their audiences exceeds $58 million in a year. And that estimated revenue that that brings in to our government is over $3 million in a year. And yet we don't have a clear plan for how to support them in the long term, and many of these organizations have been severely negatively impacted by the pandemic. So I ask that we move forward in supporting a cultural, new cultural plan for the city of Portsmouth, and that, as I said in the motion, that we have the Arts and Nonprofits Committee develop the scope of work around that plan.
Any other comments?
I just have to say, since this is your anniversary, my wife, Ellen Feinberg, was part of the committee that worked on that plan.
This is, well, oh, man, Mr. Sir, there's, yeah, some good memories in that Ellen did a good job, but it is time to dust that off, and specifically, this is a comprehensive document. As I spoke to Kate a few months ago on the form, when she joined this, she mentioned this, and members of the, the committee have stated as such that this is vital in order to help strategically plan for nonprofits and how we would expect to get them the funds that they need to survive and serve others. So again, with the community campus acquisition, I think this is a perfect time to do this, if it wasn't 20 years, but it is. So all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Okay, we've made it through most of this. Approval of grants and donations, the acceptance of a wellness reward for $2,000. The sample motion moved to approve and accept the wellness reward as presented.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I laugh because this could not possibly be given to me based on what I've been eating for lunch the last few weeks. And then city managers' informational items.
Your Honor, we, as referenced at the February 7th meeting, were providing a report back information on funding options and a little bit more background relative to levels, Level 2 and 3 electric charging stations.
Quick comment, may I, Your Honor?
Yep.
Thank you for the report back. It's on the agenda to be discussed at this Thursday Sustainability Committee meeting, and I just wanted to let everyone know, I know the financial staff have left Finance Department, but there's a chance that I may be motioning to add the 130,000 plus the cost of a new 480-volt transformer at the CIP meeting, but first I'm going to discuss it with the Sustainability Committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Denton. We are on to miscellaneous business, including business remaining unfinished. Previous meeting, we have the Citywide Neighborhood Committee meeting minutes, January 26th. Accept the motion to accept and place on file.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other miscellaneous business besides, I'm going to apologize to my wife again, but...
I second that. We all wish your wife a happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
What's left of it.
Well, all those, accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, Portsmouth. Thank you.